Welcome Jim. Do you want to test out your audio? You're muted.
I am mute, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Your audio and your video are perfect.
Good, good.
We're on YouTube now, so. We need to wrap this part up soon.
Okay, thank you.
Jim, you can turn off your, mute your mic and turn off your camera. We, we're gonna, during this time, we have the council, only cameras are on. Thank you.
Hi.
Uh, I don't see enough people here. Uh, I see three.
Let's see.
Maybe three.
I am here.
Oh, we do not have a call yet, not yet.
Oh, Gail, are you here?
Yes.
Yes, I'm here.
Gail's here, I need one more.
Demless is here.
I need one more.
Teams can begin.
Hey, Michelle.
Hello. I don't know if I'm supposed to be here for this portion, but I'm here.
Hey, Ms. Pam.
All are welcome.
Hello, Dan.
Tom, where's your counsel?
Where's what?
Where's your counsel?
I don't know.
No.
You know, back in the day, back in the day, we used to send the police out to find them.
Oh, Lord.
You know, we can't do that anymore, it's not.
Yeah, let's, let's not do that.
No, I'm pretty sure Sue is wrangling everyone right now.
Yeah.
I see a, I see a video up there for the council chamber, but I don't see anybody in it.
Yeah.
Maybe they didn't get the word.
Everybody responded.
Yeah, I don't think we can use that as an excuse, Ms. Pam, she, she made it happen, I've seen the emails.
Melvin's coming in.
Hello.
Okay, we got four. So, welcome everybody to the open session to hear public comment before closed session, Madam Clerk, call the role, please.
Vice Mayor Bates. Absent Councilman Jim Minas. Absent Councilmember Johnson.
President.
Councilwoman Martinez. Absent Councilmember McLaughlin.
Assistant.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
And Mayor Butt.
Here.
And we do have a call. If you would like to make public comments on any of the following items for council, the council will discuss on closed session, please raise your hand now. And raise your hand to participating by video, by pressing the raised hand button at the bottom of your screen. If you want to comment by phone, press the star key and the number nine. After all the items have been read into the record, the request to speak period will be closed. The council will discuss the following items in closed session. Conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Richmond Shoreline Alliance at All versus City of Richmond. Levin Terminal versus City of Richmond. Wolverine Fuel Sales versus City of Richmond. And Phillips 66 versus City of Richmond. And do we have everyone that would like to address the council, are your hands raised? Okay, it looks like we have ten speakers. And I will, each speaker will be allowed up to eleven speakers, looks like, um, okay. Everyone will be allowed up to two minutes to address the council. So I'll turn it over to Ursula, who will call the speakers, thank you.
Yes, the following speakers are on the list, Tarnell Abbott, Sierra LaVoy, Deborah Bayer, Jeannie Quartz, phone number ending in four five six two, Pam Stello. Maggie Paul, Janet Johnson, Sarah Thies, and phone number ending in zero three five two. Our first speaker will be. Tarnell Abbott. Tarnell?
I'm sorry, but your clock is taking up my entire screen, so I can't read what I wrote.
Okay, you may begin when you're ready. You have up to two minutes.
Thank you. My name is Tarnell Abbott, I'm a Richmond resident. As your primary responsibility is to protect the health and safety of Richmond residents, please do whatever you can to stop the Campus Bay Mixed Use Development Project from going forward. Building residential houses on top of the Astra Zenica Superfund Qualified Toxic Waste Dump without a full cleanup is a bad idea. This is not a brown field, as it was mistakenly characterized in the staff report written by Lena Valesko. Hundreds of toxic substances that make up 500,000 cubic yards are on the site. The legacy of 100-plus years of chemical fertilizers, pesticide manufacturing, and so on by Stauffer Chemical and Zenica. The health of future residents and workers is at risk. The health of all the wildlife who live in the stage marsh, Baxter Creek. And San Francisco Bay is at risk. Once permanently capped with concrete, there will be no way to stop the toxic plumes from continuing to spread off-site as there is no containment beneath or around it. I urge the city attorney to accept the offer made by the attorney representing the community-based lawsuit. Who reached out to you for a conversation to try to find a way to settle the lawsuit out of court. We have only the best interests of the community in our hearts, and we're forced to sue the city because the former city council were bought off by promises of community benefits and pressured by development at all costs elements. The development agreement that tries to put hand, legal handcuffs on the city. It is up to you, new city council, to represent the interests of the community, not out-of-town developers. We know that our health is dependent on the health of the waters, the groundwater, Baxter Creek, Stage Marsh, and San Francisco Bay. We are your base of power, not those out-of-town developers, the high-paid corporate attorneys and their hot, and their funded experts, we have real experts.
Thank you, Tarnell, your time has expired. Our next speaker is Sierra LaVoy.
My name is Sherry Paget, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, that's my granddaughter's name, Sierra LaVoy, it's her. IMAC. I'm a. I'm a Richmond resident, and I'm talking about the Astra Zenica site on the Richmond Southeast Shoreline. It's leaking highly contaminated water and soil gas from 550,000 cubic yards of hazardous material left behind by 100 years of chemical manufacturing. The community is near unanimous in its commitment that the material be removed from the shoreline to protect the San Francisco Bay and all future generations from its harmful impacts. Pouring concrete on top of 65 acres of hazards to build dense 80-foot-high condominiums will leave an unmitigated toxic forever legacy. There would be no way to physically reach contaminated source material after development short of tearing down newly constructed multi-story buildings. There is no containment on the sides or underneath the massive quantities of hazardous material, allowing contaminated soil and groundwater to leak unchecked for all time. In response to the community-based lawsuit regarding the heavily polluted Zenica Shoreline site, the city council has an opportunity to change course. The city council should clarify that the city policy is against citing low-income housing on any active toxic dump. And stating its support for cleaning up the toxic dump, threatening the health of the bay and surrounding neighbors. It is time for the city council to declare publicly that it wants DTSC to reopen the Astra Zenica Toxic Waste Site Declaration in light of information about its hazards to the health and the environment. How the city does that. And the format in which that takes place is what you can talk about in your closed session, thank you very much.
Thank you, and our next speaker is Tarnell Abbott. Tarnell?
I already spoke.
Oh, I'm sorry. Our next speaker is Deborah Bayer.
Thank you, um, my name is Debbie Bayer, I live in Richmond, and I'm a. So, I'm sorry, I'll start over again, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, did you hear me before?
Yes, briefly, and it cut out for some reason.
Oh, yes, that's weird, can I start again?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, my name is Debbie Bayer, um, I'm a, live in Richmond, I'm a pediatric nurse. And so I am very interested in pub, in children's health. The land use restrictions at the Campus Bay site state that no schools or daycare centers will be allowed. This is because children are more susceptible to the hazards of pollution than adults. So my question is, if daycare centers and schools are prohibited there, why is it okay for families with children to live there? There are many reasons why children are more vulnerable to heavy chemicals like mercury and lead and to gases like TCE that are found in the soil at the Astra Zenica site than they are, than adults are. One is that toxins, toxins harm developing tissues more fully than they harm fully mature systems. When children are born, their lungs, their nervous systems, and immune system begin. Are not yet mature, they began their development in the womb, but they continued to lay down new tissues and connections throughout childhood. And they need a healthy environment in order to develop properly. Because children are smaller, they take in more environmental toxins found in water, air, and soil than adults do. This leads to a higher concentration of toxins per unit of body weight. To make things worse, their ability to detoxify and excrete toxins is also not fully developed.
Yeah, because it's.
Children have a higher respiratory rate, so they breathe in more air per minute. They have a higher levels of physical activity and play outside more. They're also shorter than adults or closer to the ground. They have a habit of putting fingers in their mouths, which leads to ingestion of chemicals and heavy metals from the soil. And children like to explore. When they play outside, for example, they often dig, so do dogs and voles. No sign saying no digging allowed is going to prevent that. I would like to answer from the city council on why our children should be put at risk, thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jeannie Quartz.
Yes, good afternoon, Jeannie Quartz, Richmond resident. You now have the opportunity to reverse the extremely bad decision that was made by the former lame duck Richmond City Council regarding Astra Zenica Campus Bay. If this decision is not reversed, it will negatively affect the health of Richmond residents, plus the site is currently harming the fish and wildlife as the toxins seep into San Francisco Bay. Please update the Campus Bay Astra Zenica EIR in order to establish the current health and safety risks of the site. There were revised health risk standards from February 2020 by the US EPA on triethylchlorine. And please study the January 2021 science on sea level rise, which has predicted double the rise. Also, please acquire an updated geotechnical report based on these changes. Please ask DTSC to reconsider their decision. My tax dollars will be paying for endless litigation, reverse the decision, and start anew with current scientific facts and a full residential cleanup plan before building housing on this U, the US EPA qualified superfund site. And my final comment is directed at Mayor Butt. Mayor Butt, please stop attacking the Richmond community. What you sent out this morning on your one-way e-form about the CAG is reprehensible. You have been invited to CAG meetings, and you designated Demless Johnson to attend meetings, but he has not attended one meeting. Please stop your attacks on the good people of the Richmond community who are volunteering their time and energy to make Richmond a better, safer, and healthier community in which to live. As the mayor, you should work with the community, not work against the community, thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is phone number ending in four five six two. Please state your first and last name for the record.
Okay, just to confirm, you can hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you very much, my name is Carolyn Graves, and I'm a Richmond resident. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak. Uh, and I am speaking about the Zenica site. In 1994, the US EPA documented that the Zenica site exceeded for all the criteria needed for inclusion on the federal Superfund, Superfund Site List. However, the site isn't on the actual Superfund list now because Zenica requested being allowed to have California DTSC oversee them instead. It's a minor point, the site meets all the qualifications of the Superfund site, it's just being managed by a different organization. So it's reprehensible that the city and city staff keep insisting that it is not a Superfund site. That is just, uh, calling it a different, uh, just pointing to minutia for not being protective of your citizens' health. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Maggie Lazar. Maggie?
Um, yes. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead.
Hi, good afternoon, my name's Maggie Lazar, and I'm a longtime employee in Richmond, next to the Zenica site. And I would like to give a shout out to the wonderful community volunteers who give so generously of their time and talent to make Richmond a better place. A stellar example are those who founded and serve on the Richmond Southeast Shoreline Community Advisory Group that advises the Department of Toxic Substances Control on, about the former Zenica site. Through thousands of hours of study and advocacy over more than 15 years, this group is an invaluable resource for the Richmond City Council. Please listen to your citizen experts. Stop the construction of 4,000 condo units without the full removal of the hazardous waste that is present on the site. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Janet Johnson.
Hi, this is, hi, this is Janet, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon, I'm Janet Johnson, a Richmond resident for four decades. Coordinator of the Sunflower Alliance and co-chair of the Richmond Shoreline Alliance Steering Committee. We urge the city to change direction in regard to the Astra Zenica Toxic Waste Site. And do everything in your power to reach a settlement of the lawsuit in which the two community organizations I represent are plaintiffs. Chemicals buried at the Astra Zenica site are known carcinogens, whose effects may not show up for 10 to 30 years. We want the city to insist that the Department of Toxic Substances Control reopen their review because the science that the development agreement is based on is outdated. First and foremost regarding health risks, but also regarding sea level rise projections. Why should Richmond be the one city today building on a toxic waste dump? Haven't we moved beyond that? How is it that the city council abandoned decades of planning at the whiff of a few dollars waved in front of their faces? A cleaned-up site would be worth billions. Richmond is getting ripped off for Astra Zenica's bottom line and the developers' profits. Because it's just insane, insane to put housing, especially affordable housing, on a toxic waste dump. And to put affordable housing on ground level, where is the environmental justice in that? The city council needs to be clear and unequivocal that it doesn't support building housing on this site until it's cleaned up to residential standards. We need to move forward responsibly and in alignment with the community's interests. Thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is Sarah Thies.
Oh, thank you, my name is Sarah Thies, I live in Richmond, and I will not repeat all the points made by the previous speakers which I agree with, I, I just want to add that the data, there's been a reference to the sea level rise data of last year being, you know, updated, more updated than what was relied upon, well, even just even yesterday and today, there's new information about sea levels rise even more, so there's just, it's just a bad idea all around, and I urge the city to settle the lawsuits in the you know, in the manners indicated, and really stand on the side of the citizens and the current and future taxpayers to make, to not allow housing on this, on this site, thank you.
Thank you, our next speaker is phone number ending in zero three five two, can you please state your first and last name for the record? Phone number ending in zero three five two.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Margaret Child, I'm a Richmond resident, and I have been a part of the project to stop building on the Zenica site for the last 15 years. And considering all the new information that's coming out about mainly sea level rise and how that interacts with all the toxins already on the site, this is a very, very bad idea. And just generally speaking, anyone with any investment savvy would never be stupid enough to invest in a property built on a severely toxic site. So, um, I think that, uh, unless the council makes a move to stop the construction, that they are doing a disservice to absolutely everybody and anybody who purchases a unit on this site. And I do believe that, um, the council, if they go ahead with this project, will not be serving the citizens and the, the environment and, uh, anyone who walks along the bay trail, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dorothy Gilbert.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you very much for hearing me, I'm speaking also on the Zenica site. The Zenica site on the Richmond Southeast Shoreline, a Superfund Qualified Toxic Site, has a long history of severe contamination. After 100 years of heavy manufacturing there, a gross and dangerous error was made last December by the outgoing lame duck city council, allowing the 86-acre site to be covered with concrete. This was not just sweeping the dirt under the rug, it was allowing contaminated bay water to seep out into the surrounding areas of the shore, also further out into the bay. As the planet warms and sea and bay waters rise, the area will be liquefied, even flooded in parts, and these virulent toxins will be spread widely. This location, unless it is thoroughly clean, is no place for any construction, let alone 4,000 units. The former council chose this easy, less expensive, utterly irresponsible move, voted against the crucial extensive cleanup and for this makeshift hazardous decision. You have an opportunity to reverse this and. and make a much safer, healthier place. Please reverse this lame ducks council's decision. Please reopen the Campus Bay EIR, and please also review thoroughly the health and safety concerns regarding this area, taking into account the US EPA health risk standards established in 2020 and the global warming, the global warming sea level productions now as of this past January 2021, found to be double the threat formerly believed. Thank you very much for considering this letter. Dorothy Gilbert, Richmond homeowner, 22 years.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ferris, and please state your complete name for the record.
Hello, my name is Forrest Jessa. I'm a Richmond resident of about eight years, and I'm basically here just to repeat some of the things I feel like I keep saying over and over again that I think should be fairly obvious, and I think some of the other attendees at this meeting have already stated. It's, frankly, it's absurd. It's fascinating that there is any contemplation whatsoever about building residences in a place where you cannot care for seniors or elders, you cannot care for children, that you cannot grow your own vegetables in the garden. It just seems silly that we're even contemplating this as a possibility. It seems pretty obvious to me that the appropriate way to treat our neighbors, our citizens, our potential future residents is to make sure that they reside in places or in homes that are safe for them to reside in. And so I'll leave it at that for now. I hope maybe this time I get heard. But stop building places in toxic zones suggesting that it's actually okay for people to live there when it's not. Thanks for your time, and hopefully I won't have to say this again. Take care.
Thank you. That was our last public speaker.
Before we go, I'd like to correct a statement that one speaker made about me. The speaker said that I had been invited to numerous CAG meetings. The fact is that I've been in contact with both the chairman and the secretary of the CAG as well, as well as the DTST coordination person. And nobody can tell me when the next CAG meeting will be or how to, how to zoom into it. And I've asked multiple times. The CAG meetings are apparently a very well-kept secret. If you're on the inside, somehow you get the information. If you're not, it's a secret. So with that, I believe we are ready to... You have something?
Yes. I just wanted to report that we received 34 comments in opposition to the planned housing development at Zeneca site as currently proposed. And also, I wanted to double-check to see if Vice Mayor Bates was present. Vice Mayor Bates, are you present?
I saw him. He's down there.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and then Councilmember Hugh Manias?
Yeah, I'm here, present.
Okay. And then Councilmember Martinez?
I'm here. Thanks for checking.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, now we're adjourned to close session.
Thank you.
Alright, let me know. Test 1, test 1, 2, 3, 4, test 1, 2, 3, 4, test 1, 2, 3, 4, test 1, 2, 3, 4. Test, test, test it. 1, 2, 3, 4, 1, 2, 3, 4, test, test. Can you hear me? Rich, you alright? Okay. Yeah. I press mute. Oh, no I didn't.
Hey Richard, this is Dane and it's testing my mic.
This is Mission Control, I hear you.
Do I need to check my video as well?
Uh, you can just turn on your camera real quick.
I see ya. Great, thank you.
Thank you. Test one, two, three, four. Test one, two. Test one, two, three, four. Test one, two. Mayor, your camera's out of focus, oh no, it's focused. No, you're going to have focus again. Mayor Butt, your audio, your phone camera's going out of focus.
Yeah, I don't know why it does that.
Uh, maybe move, uh, be in the center of the screen a little bit more, maybe that'll help a little bit.
Move it to the center of the screen?
Well, make you, make sure you're in the center of the screen, so it's focusing on you and not on your wall. Try that, see what happens.
Okay. Uh, how many people we got here? I see, Johnson, Martinez, are you here? Okay, uh, there's three of us. I need one more, there you go. Okay, we have a quorum. Uh, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Richmond City Council. Would you call a roll, please, Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor Bates? Absolute. Councilmember Jimenez?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Councilmember Glaughlin?
Here.
Councilmember Willis?
Here.
Mayor Butt?
Here.
And let me go back to Vice Mayor Bates. Item two. The next item on the agenda, sorry, is Statement of Conflict of Interest, are there any? Hearing none. Next item is Agenda Review.
Madam Clerk, I'm gonna remove item J2.
You're gonna remove it? Or continue it to another meeting?
Yeah, it'll, it'll go back on at a future meeting.
Okay. But you don't have a, a date in mind. February 16th?
Uh, I'll let you know.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Okay, so I'll read this comment to the public. Anyone may make an oral comment even if a written comment has previously been submitted. However, each speaker may only raise their hand once to make one more oral comment per agenda item. As we move through the agenda, I will announce the next item number and ask individuals who would like to address the council to raise their hand. After the item is read into record, the request to speak period on the item will be closed. Uh, we will hold open forum shortly, and I will announce this again, um, soon as we come to open forum. Individuals who would like to address the council under open forum should raise their hand now. To comment by video conference, click on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen and select the Raise Hand button. And to comment by phone, press the star key and the number nine.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question? A point of clarity here?
Yes, please.
Okay, so you removed item J2, so what about people who may have wanted to speak on that item? Can they speak during open forum? Um, is the, can the city-
Uh, they can, yeah, they can speak in open forum.
Okay, so, city clerk, will you make that announcement as to what the item is that, you know, they're planning to speak on that item, yeah?
Okay. Next on the agenda is a report from the city attorney of final decisions made during closed session.
There were no final decisions made during closed session.
Item E is a report from the city manager.
Good evening, everyone. Um, a couple pieces of information for you. One of them, I think, is just fantastic piece of news, we are starting, um, a new class and it's about cooking. So, our recreation folks, I know that's, I've seen some of the positive reactions there. So- So, uh, we're trying a new series, um, on Thursdays next week, um, starting on February eleventh through March third. Um, it's a family cooking class. So right at five o'clock on Thursdays, there're gonna be a virtual cooking class, that you can do from the comfort of your home. So please try that out. Uh, also, just as a general reminder, you know, for, um, uh, more than a year, that's how long I have been here now. We've had a transparent Richmond up on our website to give all kinds of information to try and, um, help people understand what it is that we're able to accomplish here in the city of Richmond. And so there's all kinds of things such as, I wish I, I'd been, uh, had enough foresight to put up, uh, a poll. Who can guess what the most frequently lended tool is from our tool lending library? Anyone wanna guess what tool we lend the most? You won't guess it. Yes.
Broom.
A broom? It's close.
A broom or rake? What are the?
I was gonna say a power drill.
Most frequently landed item is actually an extension cord. But to Melvin's point, the number two is a garden rake. So. So while that may seem like a little piece of trivia, again, this is a part of our website that, um, gives all kinds of information. Um, it also shows things like we have completed ninety point two two miles of bike ways. Um, and that's got us forty two point eight percent towards our goal, um, of how many, um, bike ways we want to build and complete, um, within our current master plan. Um, and there's all kinds of information on housing, conservation, um, health, that kind of thing. So please check that out when you have time. Thank you. Uh, there's a question, I think.
Not a question, more so a comment. I was just gonna say, uh, um, with the announcement of the new cooking, um, show, I guess I'll just patiently await my invitation to share my culinary skills with the rest of the community.
Patience is a virtue, council member. And that's all I had for this evening, Mayor.
You're muted, Mayor.
Uh, I wasn't gonna say anything, I guess the next.
Sorry? Okay, the next item on the agenda is open forum. Anyone that would like to speak under open forum. Uh, you may speak on items that were left on consent calendar and also item J two, which was withdrawn from the agenda. Um, let's see, I will read this comment that we received before one o'clock and after, after I read the comment, then the request to speak period will be closed. We received comments from Only Cordial Henler, and he has been in conversation with the cities of San Pablo and Pino, and they do not have standing committees to hear, they do have standing committees to hear about finance. He is also disappointed that the council keeps taking items off consent calendar. He believes it is not following protocol. And tonight, under open forum, we have a request to speak from two individuals. And I'll turn it over to Ursula.
The two speakers are Emily Ross and Janet Johnson. Emily, you may begin. You have two minutes to speak.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, City Council and, uh, community members. My name is Emily Ross and I am a Richmond resident. I live in District Five. I wanna touch briefly on the city's street sweeping program as well as the responsibility our elected officials have to provide accurate information to residents. I believe street sweeping is an important mechanism to keep our city and environment safe and clean. There's a lot of garbage in my neighborhood, and I personally wish my block had signs to help make the street sweeping more effective. I listened to the January nineteenth City Council debate on the issue and felt like I had a good understanding of the outcome of the vote. The street sweeping program is still in place throughout the city, uh, but parking citations are suspended due to COVID nineteen. There's a three-month period for neighborhoods to find alternatives to permanent street signs. This applies to the two neighborhoods that requested the modification, as well as any other neighborhood in the city. Mayor Butt, I understand that you are the minority on a six to one vote on this issue, and you may have reasonable rationale for opposing it. However, your use of your e-form to promote false information about the street sweeping program and other things is really disappointing. You're the mayor of the city. Your gossip column of a newsletter is really a missed opportunity to serve as a communication channel for critical information, particularly during times of crisis. You have the responsibility and the power to use your position and platforms in service of Richmond. To those of you council members and community members that are already demonstrating leadership around racial and economic injustices that have been exacerbated by the pandemic, thank you. I've been so inspired to experience people in this community work together to protect and support each other. Truly, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Janet Johnson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I'm, good evening, I'm Janet Johnson, Richmond resident for four decades, a coordinator of the Sunflower Alliance, and co-chair of the Richmond Shoreline Alliance Steering Committee. We urge the city to change direction in regard to the AstraZeneca toxic waste site, and to do everything in your power to reach a settlement of the lawsuit in which the two community organizations I represent are plaintiffs. Chemicals buried at the AstraZeneca site are known carcinogens whose effects may not show up for ten, thirty years. We want the city to insist that the Department of Toxic Substances Control reopen their review because the science that the development agreement is based on is outdated. First and foremost, regarding health risks, but also regarding sea level rise projections. Why should city be, excuse me, why should Richmond be the city? The one city building on a toxic waste dump? Haven't we moved beyond that? How is it that the city council abandoned decades of planning at the whiff of a few dollars waved in front of their faces? A cleaned up site would be worth billions. Richmond is getting ripped off for the AstraZeneca bottom line and the developers profits. Because it's just insane to put housing, especially affordable housing, on a toxic waste dump. And to put affordable housing at ground level? Where is the environmental justice? We need to move responsibly and in alignment with the Richmond community's interests. It's time the council is clear and unequivocal that it doesn't support building housing on this site until it's cleaned up to residential standards. Thank you.
Um, excuse me, Mister Mayor, I wanted to make an informal request before we moved on to public, from public comment, if you would entertain it, please.
Uh, yeah, what do you have in mind?
Uh, well, I mean, the past several weeks, uh, I don't know what's going on with the system, but folks say they try to do public comment, and for some reason, they don't get acknowledged. So I wanted to see if we could double check to make sure that was all the public comment, just 'cause it's been an ongoing issue. So I wanted to make that request.
Okay.
Yes, we do, we do have another speaker. Go ahead, Ursula.
Yes, the speaker is Tarnell Abbott. Tarnell?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead now.
Yeah, my hand was up, and then it just wasn't up anymore, and I didn't put it down. And I've been on the call the entire time. So there, you guys are definitely having some kind of a problem. Uh, I go to Zoom meetings all the time. This is the only place this happens to me. I, I would like, uh, to just remind the city to reopen the Campus Bay E I R and do a complete health and safety review, which includes at a minimum consideration of the U S EPA T C E health risk standards that were revised in February of this year. And also the, the, the global warming sea level rise predictions, which were doubled in January of two thousand and twenty-one. It's your job to protect the health and safety of the residents of Richmond. So please do your job. And in terms of, um, Mister Butt, Mayor Butt, and your use of your e-form to try to, um, pretend that the CAG is some kind of secret organization is ridiculous. We meet monthly, we meet with state regulators when they show up. It's been a challenge, of course, during COVID because people have to use their personal Zoom accounts. Since we can't meet in person, it makes it a little difficult to accommodate the public the way that we normally would. And it's also, the D T S C, uh, at one time sent, uh, notifications to people about the meetings. And they, they stopped doing that long ago. It's been left up to volunteers to maintain the citizens advisory group, uh, that, that advises the D T S C. And you really ought to just thank us for the thousands and thousands of hours that we have put in and poured over thousands and thousands of documents, instead of trying to like shame us, as like that we're hiding from the public. This is ridiculous. And you owe us an apology.
Our last speaker will be Marisol Cantu. Marisol?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Marisol Cantu, and I work with the Reimagine Richmond Work Group, formerly known as the Reimagining Richmond Work Group. And I'm calling in regards to the recent appointments by Mayor Butt and the lack of, um, diversity in regards to the C P R C appointments. I love that you have Demlis Johnson, um, who, who I think represents a large part of the Richmond community, um, especially black folks who have been disproportionately, um, abused by the police. I do, however, urge you, Mayor Butt, um, to consider appointing Claudia Jimenez. There's a large population of undocumented, dacamented, Latinx, Spanish-speaking, uh, folks, community members, some of which are my students. I'm a professor of ESL at Contra Costa College. And we really need, um, a representative that speaks to the enormous amount of Latinx community. Not that I'm saying, uh, Mister Johnson wouldn't, that's just not his lived experience. He has a very unique experience, I do believe, um, is incredibly beneficial to the C P R C. I just think that if we're looking, um, at reimagining Richmond and public safety, that Claudia Jimenez and, and her work around, um, the Safe Return Project and with, um, undocumented communities has just been outstanding. And it would behoove you to do a co-appointment for her to learn from, from Mister Johnson and to work in better representing our city. So I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, and that was our last speaker.
Um, and we did, by the one o'clock deadline, receive one comment in support of all the appointments. And this is in regards to item J two, since it was withdrawn from the agenda. And we received three comments urging the council to appoint Claudia Jimenez as a second liaison to the Citizens Police Review Commission. And that is it for open forum. Our next item is item H one. Concerned to public notice, it's time to hold a public hearing relating to the proposed issuance of revenue bonds by the California Municipal Finance Authority in an amount not to exceed forty-eight million in connection with the issuance of revenue bonds for Richmond Hacienda L P or a partnership creating by, created by Mercy Housing Incorporated.
Miss Pam, point of order real quick. I, I don't believe we did the consent calendar.
You sure did not.
Oh, yeah, I didn't wanna, I'm sorry.
Well, you know, I make mistakes sometimes.
It happens, honestly.
You need a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, you're muted.
You know, okay, uh, there was a motion by Willis, a second by Martinez. Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Bates? Miss Absent, Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
And Mayor Butt?
Yes.
Uh, vote is unanimous.
Okay, now we're ready for, for H one.
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon, or good evening, Belinda Brown, Finance Director. Uh, this evening, we're having a public hearing on behalf of the California Municipal Finance Authority, um, for, uh, bond reissures of forty-eight million dollars, uh, for the Hacienda Apartments Affordable Housing Project. Um, just a point of clarity, these are bonds that the city has no financial or legal obligation, for repayment of the bonds. So this evening, we have Anthony Stubbs and Michael Kaplan, who will give your presentation on, uh, the bond financing.
Hello, this is Anthony Stubbs. Can you, can you hear me?
Yes. Uh, K C R T, can you put the presentation up, please? Thank you.
So we are here this evening to conduct a public hearing pursuant to the Federal Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, or T E F R A. And T E F R A requires that a public hearing be held by the governing body of a jurisdiction in which a project to be financed with tax-exempt financing is located, and that that governing body approve the proposed financing. And in this case, Mercy Housing has asked the California Municipal Finance Authority, or the C M F A, to be the issuer of tax-exempt financing in an amount not to exceed forty-eight million dollars. And the proceeds of the bonds will be used to finance the acquisition or rehabilitation of a one hundred and fifty-unit affordable senior housing facility located at thirteen hundred Roosevelt Avenue in the city of Richmond. You can go to the next slide. As mentioned, T E F R A is mandated by the IRS, and it provides a forum which the public can speak in favor or against the use of tax-exempt financing. Next slide. The C M F A is a joint powers authority formed to assist local governments, nonprofit organizations, and businesses with the issuance of both taxable and tax-exempt debt. The debt, as mentioned before, the debt to be issued by the C M F A will be the sole responsibility of the borrower. The city of Richmond will have no financial or legal obligations or responsibilities with regard to the repayment of the debt. All financing documents will carry disclaimers that the loan is not an obligation of the city, and the city will also bear no cost in the issuance of the proposed debt. Um, and it's recommended that the city council adopt a resolution approving the issuance of the bonds by the C M F A for the benefit of Mercy Housing. And this adoption is solely for the purposes of satisfying the requirements of T E F R A. And, uh, with that, I'll turn the time order, Michael, from Mercy Housing to, uh, tell you a little bit about the project.
If you can go to the next slide, please. And thank you, council members, for having us tonight. Um, it's good to be back here, getting, uh, very close to, uh, a good milestone here. Just a brief update on Hacienda, it is a hundred and fifty units, uh, be a hundred percent affordable housing for seniors. Uh, the original building was a hundred and fifty units, so that is, uh, staying the same amount, it's the same layout of the units as before, but pretty much a full renovation of the building. Uh, the units are gonna get all-new kitchens, bathrooms. The building is gonna get all-new systems, plumbing, electrical, mechanical, elevators, a seismic retrofit, a, a new roof, uh, and then a lot of improvements on the ground floor to help, um, create more community spaces for the seniors that live there, uh, including a small addition on the Marina Way side for more, uh, service spaces and community spaces, uh, as well as, uh, site-wide improvements, uh, as well. If you can go to the, the next slide. Like I said, we're getting, we're really close. We're planning to start construction in May. Um, as this is, this hearing is part of showing, getting us all of our financing. We have that all in place. We're gonna close on our financing within the next couple months and start construction. And construction should take about. And construction should take about 16 months. So we're hoping to be done by next summer, end of summer, and then lease up after that. And hopefully, by the end of '22, we will be fully occupied and up and running. So I know it's been a long, long time coming and we're excited to finally get Hacienda under construction. I think there's one more slide. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Are there any questions from council members? Councilmember Willis?
Thank you. No, this is exciting to see that this is finally coming to fruition, especially because this is like one of those concerns, like what are they going to do with that big empty building over there? Just even the cost to keep it secured in itself in the multiple fires. I'm glad this is moving forward. Thank you so much to everybody, especially you, Shasa. I know you were bottom lining this for real, so thank you. That main statement I wanted to make and a question of clarity that I wanted to get is even though it was four years ago, we did, as in that previous council too, did express that we wanted to make sure that there'd be some sort of first right of refusal from the residents that were there before but were forced to leave due to the conditions and had to find other places to go. When the Homeless Task Force started, we had members attending that Homeless Task Force that actually detailed that they still knew folks that lived at the Hacienda that were still trying to seek shelter there even after it was closed. I know that is a huge stretch, but I do think it's important that we do everything possible to do a first right of refusal to those residents, especially if their housing was impacted by the global pandemic that we're in now. So that's a comment, but I also want to see if there's any clarity or strategy around that. And thank you again. I'm excited to see this go forward.
Nanette, did you want to take that one?
Yes, if I may. Yes, there are measures in place. We have started reviewing the relocation of the original residents. We are planning to meet with Contra Costa while we're going through this process of the loan closing so we can start re-engaging and reconnecting with the former residents who vacated in 2015. We we have data and we're going to share and work collaboratively with Contra Costa, who now administers the voucher program. But we also have residents in, living currently in our public housing that were former residents of Hacienda. So we will begin re-engaging very, very quickly.
Councilwoman Martinez, I see your hand up or?
Yes, I was I was more interested in knowing how it's being financed. But thanks, staff, for doing this. It's something that's needed to be done for a long time. But but my question is, as a joint power, who who is the California Municipal Finance Authority?
So the California Municipal Finance Authority is is basically a group of cities, counties, and special districts, including the the city of Chula Vista. So the the CMFA is is made up of all of the cities and counties that join the JPA and that that authority is shared with with that GPA, the authority to issue tax-exempt financing.
Okay, so Richmond is part of that joint authority. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and could you give us a list? I don't need to hear it now, but I'd like to see a list of all the cities that are part of that joint power.
Certainly, there there's over 300 in the state of California and I will send that list over to my contact there and he can distribute.
Okay, fantastic. And and how are the bonds paid off?
With the revenue generated from the project.
Okay, so then, so then, so the bonds are created to provide the capital for the project to happen. And then after the project is done, whatever earnings they have in rent comes back to pay for the bonds. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, I actually just wanted to build on what Councilmember Willis was saying and express my, you know, happiness for how, you know, for how soon this project came about and, you know, really thank Deputy City Manager Curl, as well as Richmond Housing Director Beecham, for, you know, the outstanding work that they've done over the, not just few months, but past few years in making sure that, you know, the property is protected and that everything, you know, that we have a good partner that we can move forward to. And Mr. Kaplan, if I heard you correctly, you said summer '21 to summer '22. We're going to hold you to it. And so, you know, it'd be really beautiful to see as we come out of this pandemic, individuals will be able to go into affordable housing located right next to BART. So, you know, as I said before, I just really wanted to express my my gratitude and happiness with the individuals that I've mentioned and also those who are working behind the scenes. Because I know that there are a ton of individuals in the city manager's office, you know, who faces don't appear on Zoom, who are, you know, making things happen. And I just wanted to say thank you, man. You know, it's it's great to see things moving forward.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes, I I recall when this whole issue of Hacienda and all the problems came forward. I mean, the problems were built up over years. And I also remember the great attention that was needed to issue Section 8 vouchers to people and relocate them. And now it's great to hear and thank you, Councilmember Willis, for asking to make sure that that they get the first right of refusal. So you will seek out finding where they are. I'm sure you have some record of where they are located and see if they want to come back. And so I guess my quest, I have a question now to kind of complete this whole process. So Mercy Housing is building, constructing it. Who manages the property of the city, I guess, or the or maybe the county now that it's under the county's housing authority? Issues the the Section 8 vouchers or does the city issue them? And who manages the property are the two questions.
I'll go ahead and start and Nanette and Michael, feel free to jump in. The agreement that, under our requirements with HUD due to our certain existing circumstance, due to our asset repositioning strategy, and I want to thank all of the council members, both past councils and present council, for all your support of the housing authority. We were able to get HUD to also provide vouchers again for the new build-out. And so that is going to allow the the property to have a higher cash flow. And so, you know, obviously, if folks want to come back, they can. But, you know, some some residents, for example, moved to the to the the Harbor 8 Affordable Housing Development on the Greenway. Some moved out of state because they had Section 8 vouchers that allowed them to to move wherever they wanted. Currently, the way that Mercy and CHDC have structured this transactions with the housing authority is that Mercy will also provide the oversight onsite there. And so that we think is going to be very helpful to have an affordable housing developer onsite to manage the building. And so we will work in collaboration. Nanette, the executive director, will work in collaboration with Mercy CHDC and and to make sure that people who want to come back can and then also for for issuing new vouchers. So it's actually a really a win-win situation. And we couldn't have, we can't thank HUD enough for being so, you know, thoughtful in in this transition. And as well as for Mercy, they've brought a $7 million donor to the table and that's why we're we're really focusing on the the senior piece to to enable that, to to come to to the table and close the the gap in the financing. So overall, it's it's going to be a win-win, we hope.
And and is is it, so the city's housing authority is still issuing the vouchers?
No, the no, Contra Costa does now because we don't have, as part of our housing authority, we no longer manage the Section 8 program. So we're just in the asset repositioning phase now. But we've had a very close and collaborative working relationship with Contra Costa County. And it's been a very good working partnership and we're confident that and they've agreed to to continue to move forward with us as outlined with HUD. That was all part of what happened prior to the transfer.
And just a point of clarification regarding the voucher subsidy. The voucher subsidy that will be at Hacienda will be project-based, so it will be associated with the building. It won't be a regular housing choice voucher. So the the Housing Authority of Contra Costa does administer both the PBD program and the Housing Choice Voucher Program. But essentially, if someone has been issued a housing voucher and they wish to return, they'll have to make a decision on whether or not they're going to turn in their portable voucher for a project-based voucher.
But, yeah, so that's going to be helpful in understanding how many people may choose to return because right now, what, people have more flexibility. And so we want to make sure that they have the option to come back. But but right now, they have a more flexibility because they they have that individual voucher. I see. Just to clarify. Thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Thank you. I I also want to thank Sasha, Shasa, and all the work that has been done for these. I just have a question around, are they, they're going to be supporting services for the seniors who are going to be living there? And who will manage that? And yeah, who wish manage these services? Is the city or who?
Michael, would you like to, thank you, Councilmember Jimenez. Michael, would you like to go ahead and answer that, please?
Sure. So Mercy Housing will be both the long-term owner and manager, property manager of the building, as well as providing resident services for for the seniors that live there. So that is both connections to existing programs that Richmond already has, making sure our residents are well taken care of, but also creating programs onsite to help prevent isolation and depression and really just creating a sense of community. And that that's a that's a program that we run at Mercy Housing.
You have another question? Councilmember Jimenez?
Yeah, thank you. Is this the way that the city is looking into how to continue managing the hub?
What happened because the housing authority was continuously, over a number of years, considered troubled, is that we we have an agreement with HUD that requires us to reposition our assets because we are troubled. And so through our technical service provider with HUD, in this case, Enterprise, we've gone through a process where we've issued RFQs and RFPs for for different properties to enable them to remain affordable, but to partner, in many instances, with with local nonprofits to make sure that there's a better service delivery. And then also to, there's a process wherein the rents can be increased. And so essentially, what's what's happening through this process is is that essentially, maybe in the past, the housing authority would receive about a third of what Mercy and CHDC are going to receive for rent moving forward after this transition occurs through a process with HUD called this Section 18 process. And so that's what we're working through with HUD is to is to renovate these units and to to partner with local nonprofits and to to update them. And this is something that a number of other jurisdictions are also doing or and have done in the past. So that's that's what we're doing and it's essentially required and something that we've, that the city council and housing authority board previously agreed to to enable us to provide safe and affordable housing for Richmond residents. Thank you.
Any other questions from council members? I will now open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, do we have anybody signed up to speak?
If there are any individuals that would like to address the council on this public hearing item, please raise your hand now by pressing the raise hand button on the bottom of your screen. Or if you're joining us by phone, press the star key and the number nine. Sorry, I didn't get to announce that earlier. And I do not see what we have, one?
Yes, we have one speaker. Naomi Williams.
She'll have three minutes.
Naomi?
Am I on now?
Yes, you are.
Okay.
Go ahead, Naomi, you have up to three minutes.
Oh, I don't need that long. My question is, when they open houses back up to the seniors, is that going age like just 62 and up? Or 55 and up and no disabilities or is that going to be both? That's the question. Are they going to only be for seniors? Or are they going to be for seniors and disabled?
Hacienda project will be for seniors 62 and older.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I'm sorry, other speakers? Do you have another speaker?
We had one speaker raise their hand just a minute ago, if you'd allow it or not.
Call the speaker.
Okay, the speaker is Penn Profit. If you could please state your complete name for the record and you have up to three minutes to speak. Hello? Penn Profit? Yeah, it looks like it doesn't let me unmute it, so I don't know if they're muted on their end.
Hello?
Hello? Hello, please state your name for the record, please.
Charlotte Silvert.
Okay, go ahead. You have up to three minutes.
I'm a resident of Richmond, have been a resident for quite a while. We moved from Piedmont to Richmond to help the city. My husband is a physician here and a surgeon. And we are very opposed to your plan for having the homeless live here because in every place that they go, like in San Francisco where they provide for homeless, a week after they move them in, they have to move them out. There's so much crime, drugs, disease. And for an older person like myself, I'm afraid for my safety. Two people have been killed in San Francisco this week. And I think if you put the homeless here, that it will destroy our property values. And we did not come to Richmond to destroy the city. We came here to build the city.
I think she was on the wrong subject, but but that's okay. Are there other speakers, Madam Clerk?
That was our last speaker.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Are there any further questions or comments from council members? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll move the item. I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Willis, second by Johnson. Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yay.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
And Mayor Butt?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Next item on the agenda under resolutions is item I1. Individuals that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button. If you're joining us by video, if you're joining us by phone, press the star key and the number nine. Item I1 is to adopt a resolution in support of a just transition from fossil fuels.
So shall I speak to this since I put it on the agenda? As as we all know, we're in the middle of a climate crisis and everyone needs to be on board to make sure and everyone needs to be on board to make sure that we have a just transition. In 2018, the city of Richmond passed a resolution calling for a regional just transition and climate emergency mobilization collaboration. And we have we even sent representatives from the city to go to one of their symposiums to to share what we've been doing in Richmond in terms of moving towards a just transition. We shared with them our climate adaption plan. But, you know, it's just a plan, and and, you know, there's a lot further that we need to go. We need to make sure that everyone is on board and that we're all moving in the same direction. And as part of that, Governor Newsom had an executive order, Executive Order N seventy-nine twenty, ordering his department to prepare two reports pertaining to just transition. So basically, a just transition roadmap. And so we have a lot of environmental organizations in the Bay Area who are working towards creating a roadmap for just transition. And there's a lot of expertise. And we want to be, in fact, all communities should be a voice in writing this report. So to move forward in that direction, a lot of organizations came together. They wrote a letter that's supposed to go to the key players in Governor Newsom's office, Kate Gordon in the Office of Planning and Research, Wade Crowfoot, who is in Natural Resources Agency, Julie A. Su, who's Labor and Workforce Development Agency, and Jared Bloomenfield, who's in the Environmental Protection Agency. These are all agencies that will work together with the community in order to to have a planned, just transition. And it's important that we start now because if we don't have a plan in place, the transition will be helter-skelter, pell-mell, and and, you know, that there won't be any any direction. So 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 it's important that we start now. All of the organizations worked on a letter that we want to send to them stipulating what we see as a community as a roadmap towards a just transition. And this is here so that we can have the city of Richmond sign on with the rest of these organizations. I could give you a list of the organizations that signed on, but I think it's what it's important that this is a step that we take irregardless of who has signed on.
Are there any questions from council members? Do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we do. We have, it looks like it's three speakers. And I'll turn it over to Persson.
The, thank you, the three speakers are Tarnell Abbott, Andres Soto, and Floyd Andrews. Tarnell?
Hi.
You may begin. Yes, you may begin.
I I would like to thank Councilmember Martinez for bringing this forward. It's it's great to have a forward-thinking council member that is addressing some of the issues that face us in this really critical time. And I know that people who who work in the industry are afraid about losing their jobs. And the whole point of just transition is to make a sustainable economy that's that's workable for people who need work as and, well, maintaining a clean and safe environment. And that's what the that's the idea behind the just transition is. So developing fair economic trade, health, and safety environmental policies, which includes both frontline workers and fence-line communities, who are most affected by pollution and ecological damage, and and the need for economic restructuring is critical. And I think that there's no reason why we cannot develop a healthy economy and a clean environment. So let's let's get on with this this business. And thank you so much, Mr. Martinez.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Andres Soto. Andres? Andres? Okay, we'll come back to him. We'll go to Floyd Andrews next.
Hello, council and Mayor Butt. I'm Floyd Andrews. I'm a Richmond resident. And can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Very good. Thank you. I just want to thank you all so much for entertaining this resolution. As we move into this decade, we're already looking at Chevron in 2020 losing over $660 million. There's extreme pressure on the fossil fuel industry. I think especially with the announcement that General Motors is going to be moving to producing solely electric vehicles in the not-too-distant future. The refineries will be decommissioning. There won't be any choice around that. And I think it's imperative that a city like Richmond begin to wrap its mind around the extreme economic changes, societal changes, that will benefit us so much in the long run, but will be very difficult for us to manage in the short run. And so I'm hoping that the city council will agree to sign the letter. Our city is going to need help from state government. It's going to need help from federal government. It's going to need help from nonprofit organizations. We're going to need to come together as a city and pull forward. And this is the kind of action we should be taking, sort of the first step, I feel like, in a much broader process. So thank you very much. Thanks for bringing it, Councilmember Martinez. And thank you.
Thank you.
This is Andres Soto, and I'm back.
Okay, you can go ahead. You have two minutes.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Martinez, for bringing this resolution forward. And I certainly encourage the city council to unanimously adopt this resolution. This is going to be an ongoing and long process. Some of the speakers have already referenced the oil industry is going through a major restructuring. The decline of oil is already known in the industry. And what we've already seen here in Concha Costa County is that when Marathon decided to pull the plug on their refinery, they gave Concha Costa County absolutely no notice. When the Phillips Refinery in Rodeo, which is part of the larger refinery, that includes San Luis Obispo, when they decided they were going to shut down and try to convert over to so-called renewable diesel, they similarly did not give Concha Costa any kind of notice. So the city of Richmond would be very prudent in understanding that with Chevron being the largest taxpayer, the largest private sector employer here in the city of Richmond, that they begin preparing now to create the type of programs, the type of instruments, financial instruments that are going to help Richmond transition through this process. And in that process, we have to understand that it's not just the city government. It's also the people who continuously live here. And there's going to have to be a major investment in local existing residents for their workforce adjustment, as well as for rent stabilization and and tenants' rights. Because when the refinery closes, Richmond is going to become much more valuable land without that major polluter there. And it will eliminate much of the poverty. And we don't want to see our people gentrified out of the community. So thank you, Eduardo, and I urge the entire council to adopt this. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Nick Despota.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you can go ahead.
Nick Despota, in addition to being a Richmond resident, I'm also a member of the Concha Costa County Sustainability Commission. We have fifteen members. Two months ago, our commission unanimously recommended to the Concha Costa Board of Supervisors that it support the letter signed by sixty environmental organizations that we're talking about right now. The main thrust of the letter, and the reason we unanimously supported this, is that it will hold refineries responsible for the cost of remediation and shutdown, also for the cost of the cost of repurposing when some of their facilities are no longer being used by the by the refineries such as Marathon and Phillips sixty-six, which is repurposing for biofuels refinery. So I wanted you to know that the Board of Supervisors of our county is aware of this, and that your support for this letter right now will add weight to the call for economic responsibility, for liability for these costs. Thank you very much. I urge you to support it. Thanks.
Thank you. And that was our last public speaker.
Any further questions or comments from council members? Do we have a motion?
I'd I'd like to make a few more comments. It it's obvious that we're at a crossroads. The coronavirus showed us that we were not prepared for the economic outcome that the virus had on the community. We didn't have a plan for it. But we do know that the fossil fuel industry will have to start decommissioning in order to prevent a major disaster with economic, a major disaster with with the climate emergency. So so instead of waiting for it to happen, now is the time to start planning. And we plan not just by ourselves, we plan with the entire community. That means that that we get the oil industry, we get everyone involved so that we can come up with a plan so that when the refineries start decommissioning, we have some kind of training program so that the people who work there can transition to to an economy. And we need to start planning for a varied economy because having an economy based on one item is 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 a plan for disaster. So so I urge everyone to vote yes on this so that we can have a unanimous decision.
Vice Mayor Bates?
Thank you for the presentation. I want to hear from staff in terms of their analysis, pros and cons of this action. How does it affect Richmond? Or does it affect Richmond? I think we all recognize that with climate control and now that the government agencies, especially the federal governments, are moving toward EVs. So I just want to hear from our staff in terms of how this affects the city of Richmond, pro and con, if you may, Madam City Manager, or someone else who maybe follow this particular item.
Sure, Vice Mayor. So as the information in the council packet reflects, with items that the council members are bringing forward, there has not been any staff analysis on this.
Okay, any other, Councilwoman McLaughlin?
Yes.
Well, I was concerned why?
Go go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'm concerned, item of this magnitude, why would not staff have done a little research to give us some guidance?
Sure, the protocols are such that the items can come on from any council member with with, I think, less than twenty, just about twenty-four hours ahead of the agenda items. And that's something that the council may want to discuss at a workshop or something else if we want to address any protocols. And if you'd like to have some staff assistance looking at items before they're announced on.
Are you done, Vice Mayor? Councilwoman McLaughlin?
Yes, I just want to thank Councilmember Martinez and all the environmental justice groups who have put their energy into this whole concept of just transition. I think it's a no-brainer. We all have to support it. We know that there is a limited amount of fossil fuels, a limited amount of oil in the ground. And it is not only harming our climate, but it is running out. And we know that workers will be left in a lurch if we don't retrain them now and put them into a position where they can get jobs in the clean energy industries. So I think this is just a no-brainer. It's basically, we all, I think, have a adhere to the principle of environmental justice. And we want to make sure that those who are in the industry are retrained so they aren't left in a lurch when things start to dismantle.
Now, would you like to move the item, Councilwoman Martinez?
I would like to move the item, but I'd also like to give a I'd like to give my analysis of of what this letter does. What this letter does is it shows the state and therefore the federal government that we are working on a plan for a just transition. There is going to be monies, federal monies, state monies coming down to help cities, help communities make this transition. It's going to help us get rid of combustion engines and 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 move towards electric cars. And if we can show these upper governments that we're ready for it, the money will come to us.
Okay, I have a motion from Martinez, a second from Willis. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bates?
But, you know, you're moving this thing rapidly. And I certainly support the concept. But if staff is not willing to give us some kind of analysis down the road, you know, we can look bad. So I would like, I would like to vote for it, but I would like this thing continued one week and allow the staff to come back with an analysis. We just can't arbitrarily vote on something one or two council members put on the agenda. And like I said, I'm going to abstain at this point and ask that the author, if you want a unanimous vote, which I think would be very valuable, is that let's get the staff involved and give us some analysis from their perspective, not just from council members' perspective. So if you are willing to do that, if you're willing to ask ask the staff to come back with an analysis later on for re potential reconsideration, I'll support the motion. Otherwise, I don't feel comfortable voting on something with staff no input. So that's up to you, Mr. Martinez.
Okay, well, since since this letter is going to be going to the state tomorrow, I it's important that it happens today. So I guess I'll have to say what Biden says, that it will move forward with or without you.
Well, will you accept amendment that the staff come back with analysis of report within thirty days?
Yeah, that would be fine, but 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 it needs to pass today.
Okay, Councilwoman Ross, are you okay with that amendment?
With that amendment, I'll vote yes.
Okay.
Look, I'm I'm okay with the amendment, but I want to realistically check in on staff's time because it's not like they're not doing anything at all. So can we see if that's realistic to them or negotiate on once a realistic time to get that data back, then I'm okay with that.
Sure, thank you for the question. And realistically, I'm not even sure what it's going to take to do an analysis in terms of a full-blown analysis. But I think we could commit to bring, I don't think we, I think we would just like to share the information as soon as it's available. It doesn't sound like we need it to be in another agenda item since we would be sending the letter already. So if that sounds good for folks, that will make it a little bit easier for us.
All right. Okay, let's proceed with the roll call.
Vice Mayor Bates?
Yes.
Councilman Jimenez?
Yes, and I just wanted to say thank you, Councilmember Martinez, for opening this conversation. This is a conversation that we start today, is not ending, is not, is a conversation that is all loan overdue. And we we have a responsibility here.
to start these conversations about what is the future of Richmond out of fossil fuel. So thank you. I vote yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Because I believe in science, I'm going to have to vote yes. And I would also like to thank Councilmember Martinez for putting this on because after reading the governor's proposed budget and if, you know, the chatter and scuttlebutt that's going on in Sacramento is correct, you are properly positioned in the city of Richmond to receive funds from the state that will, as Councilmember Jimenez put, help puts the city of Richmond in the future. So thank you again.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes, and Councilmember Johnson, when you said I believe in science, Noah, Bill Nye, the Science Guy theme song was playing in my head. But yes.
You and I grew up on Bill Nye.
Mayor Butt?
Yes.
The vote is unanimous. Next item. Item J1. Anyone that would like to speak on this item, please raise your hand by pressing the raise hand button. If you're joining us by video, press the star and the number nine key if you're joining us by phone. Item J1 is to discuss and provide direction to staff on a site for safe parking program. Accept and appropriate a $260,000 HEAT grant from Concha Costa County for this program and appropriate $300,000 of affordable housing in Lufi for this program. And authorize the city manager to negotiate a and and execute a sole source contract with Housing Consortium of the East Bay in an amount not to exceed $560,000 to establish and manage the safe parking program facility. Looks like we have eight speakers so far for this item.
I assume we have a staff presentation.
Yes, we do, Mayor Butt.
Okay.
So, good evening, Mayor Butt, councilmembers. Selena Velasco, Community Development Director. With me this evening, we have Michelle Mylum, Crime Prevention Manager, also staff support for the Homelessness Task Force, and Emily Carroll, Planner 2. We also have Battalion Chief Aaron Osorio, who is from the Richmond Fire Department, who is the Training Manager for the Fire Department, since we are looking at a fire facility. We also have Darren Lowndes, who's Executive Director of the Housing Consortium of the East Bay, who's also available to answer questions. And I also believe Luis Padilla from Local 188 is also on if the council has questions for them. So we're here to request four separate actions from the council. The first is, we would like the council to discuss and provide staff direction regarding potential site for the pilot safe parking program. Staff will review three recommended sites, and we're seeking council selection of one of those sites to establish the pilot program. We would also are asking the council to accept and appropriate a $260,000 homelessness emergency aid program grant from Costa Costa that would provide support for the safe parking program and to appropriate $300,000 of affordable housing in Lufis, which are city affordable housing fees. And then authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute a sole source contract with the Housing Consortium of the East Bay for not to exceed amount of $560,000 who to establish and manage the safe parking facility. So with that, I will pass it over to Michelle, who will provide a little bit of background.
Thank you, Member of the City Council, and thank you to the team. So I want to get a little bit of background on the safe parking program and the history of it. So a lot of people want to know what exactly is the safe parking program. A safe parking program really is to create a safe place and a secure place for recreational vehicle dwellers and for occupancy vehicles to be able to park and to be able to receive some transitional services to help people, as we know, we're going through this pandemic time, who are unhoused and who are living in their vehicles. We need no drive not farther than our local city block to see vehicles and folks who are sleeping in their vehicles on our city streets every night, which presents a challenge for the city because you have folks who are sleeping in their cars on the street, which result in enforcement actions, cost to the city, impact to businesses and public properties, and obviously, impact to those individuals themselves who don't have a safe space to be able to transition into stabilized housing. So this program really would provide them with some economic stability. I just want to make some note of what a safe parking program is. It actually does provide resources. It has a case management process, an intake process. It is not the same thing as a homeless encampment that is under-resourced or has very little resources, and that is a fodder for crime and other activities that many neighborhoods are concerned about. This is really a very organized program, and it's differentiated from an encampment. The city of Richmond and you as a council have already taken some action on this. So there was a safe parking program goal that was established in 2017, approved by the city council as a recommendation from the Homeless Task Force. And you all directed staff at that time or the previous council to be able to take a look at how we could get a safe parking program established, looking at other models, what other cities were doing, and how to be able to come up with an effective program. So we do this and do this well. And since COVID-19 has happened, we've seen an exponential growth in vehicle dwellers. I'm sure many of you have gotten calls from residents in the community who are either seeking housing or neighbors who are concerned about folks who are parking in their neighborhoods and and what the city's direction is going to be to try to address this issue.
Little context on some of the past survey and study we've done on safe parking programs. In 2019, the Planning Department, in collaboration with PD, did a survey of RVs within Richmond, and we found at one point in time, there were 84 RVs on the city streets. Forty-seven percent of those RVs had a valid registration. And of those with a valid registration, 45 of them were registered to addresses somewhere in Richmond. We also found that 22% of the RVs were previously, or excuse me, 11% of the RVs were previously registered in Richmond, but that that registration had lapsed. And we also have been following the point-in-time data. The point-in-time is a broad data collection that covers all of Concha Costa County. And so this is from 2020, so January 2020. This documented the sleep setting for 1,750 unsheltered individuals. And as you can see at that time, 37% of those who are unsheltered were living in a van, a car, or an RV. And at that time, or at the time of the data collection, 690 people were living in shelters or transitional care. And now, the majority of those shelter beds and transitional spaces are not open due to COVID.
Thank you. And then we're going to talk a little bit more about some of the services provided in a safe parking pilot program. So the previous city council authorized planning staff in conjunction with the Homeless Task Force to take a look at what is the best model for being able to implement a program like this? Because it was really important to find out fundamentally, what do you have to do to make these programs safe and to make them effective and to make them work? So there's lots of different components in that, and we looked at several different pieces of it. One is that there would be an intake and assessment process. And really, most of the programs, if you look at Oakland or you look at other models, they've done an intake process to see if, number one, the program participants want to participate in this because it's a voluntary program, and if they're willing to abide by some program agreements. There's agreements that the service provider provides to those program participants to provide a safe space for them to be, to be able to provide them with wraparound services, case management, sometimes meal services, showers, hygiene, you know, being able to have sanitation, a place to be able to store their items, a clean and a safe environment. So those are some of the things that the program does on behalf of the participants. And then the participants also have responsibilities, and those responsibilities really are to adhere to a code of conduct and a safety plan to be able to create a safe and a respectable environment for all the program participants on site. We were looking at a program with 24-hour onsite management and a security plan, 24-hour security to be able to not only secure the safety of those who are participating in the program, but also bring some peace of mind to some of the surrounding neighbors who might be concerned about something that may happen on on property so that there are plenty of eyes on what's happening and that everything is really happening in a supervised environment. Also, connection to service agencies. As you all know, there is a shelter shortage right now. I know that there's a lot of things that are in the works to be able to take a look at that from both the governor's office and the state and the feds, funding some of the Project Room Key assistance. But we're still looking at at least, you know, a period of a year, a year and a half that we have to deal with the COVID-19 shelter crisis in addition to the crisis that already existed. So we want to make sure that people are connected to the Concha Costa County System of Care, that they get assessed, that this is not a permanent site for them to be. It's important to recognize that and share that with, you know, those of you who are looking at the program. It is a one-year pilot site, and people would really be charged with helping to create a plan to be able to safely transition. So connecting to service agencies and Concha Costa County System of Care and other community-based organizations would be very helpful. And then also, we want to make sure that we acknowledge COVID-19 and that everyone is following those social distance protocols that we know are important to be able to make sure that a program like this is safe. Next slide, please. And so a lot of folks have asked, well, what is the target population? Who is this targeting? We took a look at all kinds of different programs that cities had implemented around California and even in other areas. And so really, this program would focus on Richmond dwellers. When we took a look at the data, we found that most of the folks who are unhoused in Richmond, especially those who are made to be contacted by our core homeless outreach team, are Richmond-based and Richmond residents. For example, during an eight-month period that our core homeless outreach last year made contact with individuals on the street, 476 of those contacts, a good 80% of those folks were Richmond-based. They did not come from other cities. So Richmond and West County would be our criteria. We would focus on really single people or couples, however they define their unit or their family. We would be looking at vehicles that are operable, and we also want to make sure that those who participate in the program really want to be a part of it and are able to kind of meet our, the program guidelines. And so I think my last slide is about funding. So this is a one-year pilot project. So whatever site you select tonight really is a way for us to see how effective this program can work. And especially in the light of COVID-19, it's something that is an emergency need that that we need right now because we're seeing the growth of vehicles on city streets. The cost of the city, as mentioned before, is $560,000. 260 of that comes from the State of California HEAT Grant through Concha Costa County, which is the providing agency. And it's important to note that grant funding is contingent on the site selection. So we do have to have a site to be able to implement this program, and it should be in place by March 1. And then those funds must be expended rather quickly from the county side. And that's a really important part of this funding piece that we want to make sure it's preserved and is intact. And then the other piece of that comes from $300,000 of the Affordable Housing Fund or in Lufis. The previous city council already set aside and designated those funds specifically for this purpose.
Thanks. So as Michelle just said, identifying a site is a really important part of this process. And the map on this slide shows the geographic breadth of the sites that we studied. So here, the blue pins represent city-owned sites. The orange pins represent privately-owned sites, and the green pins represent sites that are owned by other public agencies. So staff analyzed 35 sites throughout the city, 15 of which were city-owned, five owned by other public agencies, and 15 that were, that are privately owned. And we gathered these sites from council members, members of the Homeless Task Force, city staff, and members of the public. There's a very wide range of sites. They're very small, 14,000 square feet to 25 acres. They're in remote industrial areas and really dense neighborhoods. And the sites that we studied also ran the gamut from being paved, fenced with existing lighting and water access to being unpaved, essentially undeveloped sites, kind of in more remote areas of the city. So the ideal site is paved, has some existing infrastructure, including electrical and water hookups, and is proximate to both transit and existing services. So as you can see below, we created a scoring matrix to evaluate the sites. So we scored sites, one if they were city-owned, and zero if they were privately owned or owned by another agency. And this point reflects that a city on site, there's the opportunity to maybe operationalize the site more quickly. We also gave the sites a point if they were paved. And we scored them on a range of zero to three for access to transit and access to services as well as evaluating the existing infrastructure on the site. So the maximum score for the sites is 11. And in the staff report, we provided a full matrix of all of the sites that were evaluated. And based on this scoring criteria, there are three sites that staff finds are the most appropriate for this program. So the three sites are 1800 Barrett or the Lighthouse Building, the Fire Training Center on Cutting and Stige, and the Civic Center Parking Lot adjacent to the library. And we'll provide some more information about those sites.
Thank you, Emily. So I'm going to shift it a little bit to the arials, and and we'll go through the pros and the cons of the sites as we see them for council's consideration. So the first site that was the highest ranked is 1800 Barrett. This is a former redevelopment agency site and is now on the city surplus properties list. So this site, it has an existing building that was formerly used as a daycare center. It's relatively small compared to the other sites. There is currently no driveway access to this portion of the property. There's an easement that is adjacent to the church to the right of the site. And so our recommendation as part of the physical improvements would be to install fencing between the two properties, but also create a new driveway approach on 18th Street that would allow entrances from there as opposed to going on to the adjacent property. Some of the other improvements we would see is we would need to bring in a service trailer for the service providers. We would need to set up trash service for the site. And then we would also need to provide a security gate for vehicle access and a driveway approach. The second highest-ranked site, which is tied with the third, is the Fire Training Center. So really, it's the area to the north. We have had discussions with the Fire Department, including the former Fire Chief, as well as Battalion Chief Osorio and Luis Padilla from the the local. And, you know, I think our goal here, if if this is the selected site, is that it would be limited so it wouldn't take over the entire site so that the Fire Department could maintain some of the the required trainings that they need to to keep staff licensed and and ready for action. So there is an existing trailer here that has two classrooms. These classrooms are were formerly used by CERT, as well as require some of the EMT trainings. So these would be available to service providers, at least temporarily, while while this pilot program is could would happen here. This site is very much clean compared to the aerial photograph, so it doesn't show the whole area that would be available. But if you can follow the mouse, this would be the area for the parking. There are current trash pickup that that occurs here, but and there is a gate along cutting that some improvements would be needed to to potentially create a pedestrian gate as as well as improve the function of that gate. But we would need to install an interior fence as well as move some equipment that is here to other locations on the site to be able to maintain the fire department's ability to to use those for trainings. There is also a helicopter landing pad that is on the site. So we believe that as as if the safe parking program is placed on this site, that that would need to be temporarily suspended as well. And this is the interior fence that would need to be added just to provide some limit access to the fire training facility. And it's our understanding that the fire department, you know, visits the site regularly, so we think that that's an added bonus in that it would also provide some surveillance of the operations and the management in that staff does visit here regularly. It's also pretty well screened from cutting. There will need to be some interior fencing screening that would need to be added to screen it from the properties south of the site. So the third site that we're recommending is the parking lot in front of the main library. Now, you know, when we prepared the staff report, I think we were also understanding that the city manager's office was working with Contra Costa Health Services and creating a vaccination site for COVID over at the auditorium. So we do understand that if this is the selected site, it will further impede parking in the immediate area, which we do anticipate will be in high demand. You know, once the vaccinations really get started. I think, you know, the residents in the area may argue already that there's a parking shortage. So some of the improvements that would be needed is obviously we would need to install a fence. There would need to be a trailer for service providers as well as a security gate that would be added. One of the other complicated things is that there are wheel stops currently in most of the parking spaces. So those wheel stops will need to be removed to allow vehicle parking and access. That's would provide for more options because right now it'd be limited that you'd have to go around. You couldn't cross through traffic. So we need to, or through the lanes, we would need to remove some wheel stops. But there is lighting, the site's paved. It's also beneficial in that, you know, there is city staff regularly here at the Civic Center and so it would provide some additional eyes and surveillance of the operations. So I think with that, we'll pass it over to Michelle to talk about the Housing Consortium of the East Bay.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, Lena and Emily. So the Housing Consortium of the East Bay is a is a viable option when we were looking for an operator that could help us manage this program. Because obviously, even with the support of all of our city staff and a departmental team that will obviously be providing direction to this project, you need an on-the-ground operator that's working on this project twenty-four seven, that's managing the intake and that has a lot of experience in doing these programs. And honestly, many cities are doing this, but it's still relatively new in terms of organizations that have the capacity to be able to manage a site like this. So Housing Consortium of the East Bay is actually a program that currently operates several safe parking sites in Oakland. You might be familiar with Project Homebase. They have fifty-seven FEMA trailers that are available. They also manage two RV parking sites for a total of eighty participants for the city of Oakland with electrical hip-ups and portable wash and laundry units. And they also operate a safe parking program for Alameda County at the Fairmont Campus, if any of you have ever seen that area. And the Alameda County site can accommodate probably about twenty automobiles and vans. So they have a lot of experience doing this kind of program. They have a lot of experience with program screening, working with different county organizations to be able to help people get the housing services, economic and job services that they might need to be able to come up with a transition plan and be able to stabilize. And they're really recognized for inclusive community work, including dealing with people with developmental disabilities or special needs, which we thought was an important part since when you take a look at our core stats, there is a high level of our population that are disabled. So we thought that that was an important piece. Next slide. So things that have already happened that have been put in motion, should the council take action tonight, is Housing Consortium of the East Bay has provided the city with a draft scope of work. And some of the key tasks include helping to develop a a project matrix for outreach, for intake, for assessment based upon the city's needs that we talked about earlier and some of the program criteria and population that we were looking to target. It also included staffing and project oversight, a safety plan, and being able to really incorporate some of those elements that are needed to be able to make a site like this work, including managing some of the subcontractors, food delivery, being able to deal with things like waste and receptacle, housing, storage, those kinds of things that you need onsite to make it work. And I think that the most important thing is having that twenty-four hour onsite management from both a security standpoint and also from a case management standpoint, that there'll be a manager onsite twenty-four seven to be able to monitor the program in addition to security to monitor the gate. Because the most important thing for people to realize is it's not just a kind of free-for-all for people to come and park. It's really a very thoughtful process of folks who are participating in the program and gain benefit from the program and be able to have just what they need is a safe place to be able to to park and get the resources that they need. And so this operator spoke to us and was came recommended for the work that they do specifically around those issues.
Okay, so I think in terms of next steps, if the council is able to identify a preferred site and takes the actions recommended by staff, the next steps would include finalizing the contract with Housing Consortium of the East Bay. We would also need to do site visits to the selected site and identify and perform any critical capital improvements, including fencing, gates, driveway approaches, lighting. We would also be working with an interdepartmental team. So as part of the outreach, we're we're obviously dealing with a lot of vehicle dwellers throughout the city in target areas where we we are receiving a lot of code enforcement complaints. So I think there's a lot of staff service, staff time and resources that are currently being dedicated to responding to complaints and addressing those. So we would work to identify what are the hotspots for that and then potentially hopefully see a savings in some costs that the city is currently experiencing as part of enforcement actions. We would finalize application and outreach process in coordination with the operator and then start doing some outreach to vehicle dwellers. We would also like to share project information with the surrounding neighbors of the selected site to provide a little bit more information about what the program, what it does, if concerns arise, who to contact. And then I think too, you know, there's a potential that the need for a program similar to this may continue. We are currently only have resources and are proposing a site that is short-term. It would be a one-year pilot. So I think we would continue to study a potential permanent location as well as seek funding to fund a permanent location if that's what the council desires. But I think this is, the sites that we're proposing would not be permanent locations. So we do think that we would need to continue to study that and look at where a permanent location could be added for the council's consideration. So that concludes our presentation and we're happy to answer any questions. Here's just a reminder of what the recommended actions. And then we're happy to answer any questions from the council.
Questions from council members. Councilmember Willis.
Yeah, thank you. And thank you for the presentation. I know this has been an ongoing challenge for a few years. I did have a couple of questions and I just wanted to kind of say before hearing public comment, of course, where I'm at in terms of ranking the sites myself and small reasons why. But real quick to staff, could you let us know like, how long do we have to really make a decision on this before the deadline's up?
So it really depends on the council's appetite for to fund it all. So the HEAP dollars, because they have to be expended by June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one of this year, the county is is requesting that we have the site up and running by March first so that we can actually expend the two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. If not, they certainly have other programs and projects that they could afford it to. So if the council doesn't make a decision tonight, we think that we're in jeopardy of losing the two hundred and sixty thousand. So if the council wanted to consent, continue consideration of the program, it would have to fund it fully.
Yeah, I don't think we're in a financial position to do that. So thank you for letting me know the urgency on that. And just from wanting to review the presentation, just to make sure I'm clear. The first site that we'd be, we would be selecting would host about sixty vehicle dwell, vehicles essentially?
It it would vary based on the site, based on some preliminary staff analysis. I think part of the setup with the operator as well as working with the fire marshal and other, you know, city staff would be to confirm that number and it's going to depend on the vehicles, right? So RVs will take up more space than cars and vans. But for the Lighthouse Building, we think that it could accommodate between ten and fifteen vehicles. And then the Fire Training Center could be up to twenty to thirty vehicles. And then the Civic Center Parking Lot would be fifteen to twenty. And so the participants will vary. I think if you assumed couples, you would double the number.
Okay. No, that's helpful. And in terms of security and also the case manager for the site, I'm understanding, one, it's, somebody has to be on staff basically twenty-four hours to monitor activities, right?
That's correct. We would have an onsite manager twenty-four seven. And then we're currently in discussions with the Housing Consortium of the East Bay as to whether or not we would have twenty-four seven security by a third party or if it would be during certain times of the day.
Do you know how many site managers it would be? Because realistically speaking, I know we're not going to have one person be there twenty-four seven. So do you have an idea how many that number's going to be?
Darren, is that a question that you can address based on your other sites?
Yes, so we do have, we have several different staffing models depending on the site and the and the budgets. But we typically have site management from nine to five, Monday through Friday. And then site coordinators, which are slightly lower and supervised by the site site manager, that work second and third shifts, Monday through Friday, and then twenty-four seven on the weekends. And then yeah, and then we can also, you know, we can then figure out where we need security. So if we feel like security's more needed during the daytime hours or there's more ins and outs, great, but you know, that's all stuff we can assess with with the with the city staff once we figure out the site, for instance. And and then what what do you feel like the site needs are?
Okay, this is just my opinion, but I think it's going to be a safe bet to say that security is going to be more needed towards the evening and AM hours, but that's just my assumption. And, okay, thank you. And to comment, I know this is a controversial issue and it's been a controversial issue for a couple of years, but I think we're kind of in a dand if you do, dand if you don't point. And for that, I sincerely apologize, but it was already a crisis and now the crisis has only gotten worse. So the sites I'm interested in is actually, my first choice would be the Civic Center Parking Lot. In a way, not just to be dramatic, but I would kind of want to to be a reminder on this is the situation that we're in and emphasize the importance on making sure that we transition these people out of homelessness, which is why I'd want the Civic Center there. Plus, staff and more eyes on the site, as was previously stated. The eighteen hundred one would be my second choice. The main reason it's my second choice, and I know this is probably can be said about any of the sites, but I do notice that there is a lot of residents like right next door to it. And that was a complaint I got when we selected North Richmond. It's just how close and right in front of housing it was and that's something I noticed on the Google Maps. But I'm excited about it because of its proximity to transportation and all those other things that make it worth it. And I guess, I don't know if this is a rational reason, but I am going to say it. The main reason Firehouse Station is third on the list for me is one thing, it just does kind of block and cage off like any visual to know if there is activity there, which I know would probably be something that residents would prefer. But also just the stigma over the years about every time there's an issue, we're always dumping the issue on people of color communities. And I really don't want to perpetuate that cycle. But what does excite me is the fact that can hold more, but I don't want to perpetuate. Like we're just always putting it in the most underserved areas of our community. So as it stands right now, Civic Center, eighteen hundred, or the fire station, that's my rank. And I'll end my comments from there. Thank you so much for the hard work and presentation, too.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to everyone who's worked on this project, city staff, especially you, Michelle. I know we've talked about this project in the past and you've really dug in here, so thank you for that. And I was just wondering, I'm I'm not sure if I missed it, are you guys, you know, it probably wasn't a presentation. But I was just wondering two things. The first one is, will there be a priority, you know, for fam, you talked about the different priorities. And I was just wondering about, you know, for families with kids, you know, having worked at Richmond High School, which you dad, actually, Michelle. You know, we encounter students who are, you know, in fact, living in their in their vehicles with their families. And I wanted to make sure that this program acknowledges that, yeah, that's a side of injustice.
Yeah, thank you for that. You know, that was a a discussion that we had as we kind of were researching this because we know that there are a percentage of families, especially now with the, you know, COVID nineteen and people kind of moving unfortunately into first-time homelessness, that's an issue. You know, when we took a look at, you know, kind of how other cities have done it and looking at the needs of what it would take to be able to host families, most of the safe parking programs that exist really kind of focus on folks who are eighteen and up. It doesn't mean that it can't serve a youth population because there are a lot of young adults who are going into homelessness or between the eighteen and twenty-four age. And of course, they would still be allowed to participate. But when you have younger kids and 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 students and, you know, being able to have connectivity so they can do their distance learning and being able to ensure you know, not necessarily, you know, knowing kind of like all the things that need to be done to make sure that that they're getting their needs met and accommodating that cycle. We really were looking at more individuals that were eighteen and up. But if you take a look at some of the stats and statistics of people who are experiencing first-time homelessness, you do have some younger people who are experiencing that. We didn't necessarily look at families because we know that the grid station center is going to be open and there's going to be other options for some of the families. There's actually more shelter space for families than there is for individuals. So your average homeless person is usually an African-American adult male.
Sounds like my group. So since you also brought up the the data, I mean, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but a good amount of these individuals who are experiencing first-time homelessness are also employed and are part of the the working, the working houseless, correct?
Yes, some are houseless. If I take a look at my stats here, looking at the core data that we collected over the last eight months of the year, of the folks who, the four hundred and seventy-six people that core contacted during that period, they listed their number one cause of homelessness as low income, which was four seventy-six, and then loss of job, followed by eviction. So those are really kinds of things that are leading to it. Some of them were employed, but most of it was, I would say over eighty percent of the people core contacted were not making I would say over 80% of the people Core contacted were not making $1,000 a month. You know, that was very rare.
And and before I get into, um, get into, you know, my preferences, I just wanted to, you know, make this statement and thank you so much for that, Michelle, because I know some people may be saying, well, you know, why are you giving these people a handout or why are you doing X, Y, and Z for, you know, for these individuals and they should just help themselves? We just, they are helping, they are helping themselves. They're literally getting up every morning, going to work, trying to make things happen, but they are literally too poor to afford a house. And that's something that, you know, as the, as the government, you know, that that leaves this locality, that's something that we most definitely, we have to correct. And so, you know, into the federal government, you know, restructures this whole employment and wage structure, we have to make sure that we can do something, you know, in the now. And this is one of those things. And once again, I really appreciate, you know, the data collected and all of the work done around this. And so with that being said, I guess I'll get into the preferences that I have and why. And, you know, I also have a few questions in regards. And the first one, um, I guess the number one on my list is the lighthouse. Is the lighthouse facility and it's, um, for the same reason that Councilmember Willis pointed out is proximity to BART as well as when you begin to cross over onto McDonald, there's others services that individuals can take advantage of. You know, the one con for me is, you know, you, as you mentioned, there aren't a lot of parking spaces there. So that prompts me to ask this question. What's going on with Metro Walk 2, which is adjacent to this site and I believe was up for RFP not too long ago. And we, if I'm not mistaken, own that land. So couldn't that be used as like an extension to the lighthouse or if not its own site? Was that one of the 15?
Um, so we did consider that, Councilmember Johnson. So the city is technically not the legal owner. It is under BART still. However, we do have the disposition and development agreement with BART. And that they would transfer that property over to the city, who would then transfer it to a developer as in exchange for building the parking garage at the BART station. So we are currently working and the council recently approved a contract with Goldfarb and Litman to assist us in amending the DDA that would provide for a greater number of units on at Metro Walk Phase 2. So we do have an application in for the project. They've submitted a preliminary application for for I believe it's 147 units, which would be a phase one. So we believe that that site could be seeing some redevelopment in the short term.
Okay, well, I'll just, I'll just say this when I move on. Any event that Lighthouse is chosen, I would actually like for us to open up discussions with BART to see if we could use that as a, as an overflow. I know Latifah Simon, one of the BART directors, is extremely committed to solving this issue. And so I don't see there being any, you know, hard qualms in regards of at least not having the conversation with us. So like I said, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. The next, number two on my list would be the Civic Center space. The Civic Center space, and actually it was, you were mentioning that the COVID vaccinations are going to be taking place there. I would love to see that, you know, happen for the individuals who are who are in that situation. Down the street, we have the COVID testing. We have city services right there. It would kind of be like a transitional village hub kind of campus type environment. You know, I know some people in my, in my neighborhood right here in northern, northeast may say, but what about parking? We're quarantined right now and I understand that people are going to get out of quarantine and drive around, but for now, like, I do, I do see that as a valuable option. The reason why the fire training station on Cutting falls last on my list, once again, Councilmember Willis kind of hit it on the head in terms of placing a distressed community in another distressed community and kind of making, you know, compounding the problem. And I really don't want to be a part of that. And then also I'm curious, um, aren't there participants in the Richmond Youth Academy? For the, you know, for the Fire Richmond Youth Academy, I believe they have 30 or something participants that need to use that site. And I'm wondering how, you know, this, this, this safe parking space would impact that program, which I know is now on Zoom, but I know the whole purpose of the program is to train them in the, in the ways of the firefighters. So I'm curious to know how like this safe parking, you know, village would impact the firefighters Richmond Youth Academy.
Battalion Chief Osorio, is that a question that you can address?
Oh, yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, you know, that was one of the things that we talked about briefly, Lena, that would also be impacted. Currently it wouldn't just because of COVID. The program isn't running right now. But, you know, the goal would be that that program gets fired back up, just like a lot of our other programs that had to be put on hold. And the proposed internal fence line would have probably the most encroachment on the classroom and the building that is being used by the youth academy. You know, so yeah, it's, it's, it goes along with CERT, it goes along with our training, it goes along with a whole number of things that we use that facility for. You know, it wasn't going to be, it's not a zero impact plan. It was just trying to find, you know, work as a team and find maybe a, an option if there was no other option, but it will have impact on the youth academy. It will have impact on a number of other operations.
And I get, and thank you for that Battalion Chief, Arizo, Osorio, my apologies. I mean, I guess I'll just say this and shut up. And I, and I'll, and I'll, you know, reiterate that I'll, I'll keep the fire training center third on my list for the simple fact that, you know, although, you know, the, the Richmond Youth Academy is, you know, not meeting physically right now. When this is all over, it's two things that I would hate to see happen is that they be extremely impacted, you know, by, you know, they're already impacted by not being able to go outside and, you know, participate in regular activities. And then when we get back to some type of semi-normal, their activities that they will go back to have been severely impacted as well, right? And then the other piece that I, that I would hate to see happen is this, I know that this is just a pilot program. We're going to eventually have to find a permanent site. But to have to kind of shift that if this is, if it's too much impact on the, on the youth program. So like I said, I'll say that and shut up. Thank you.
Councilmember Jimenez.
Thank you. And Emily, Lena, Michelle, thank you so much for the presentation and all the work that you are doing to create this program. I think it's important and we know that it's a lot of, of our communities who are experiencing homelessness. I have a couple of questions. So I will start and like, so I see like the Housing Consortium, do they work with any services providers in Richmond? It seems like the programs are more in other cities and I wonder if they work with the Richmond providers, which, which are they?
I think that Darren can probably talk about that, but that was a conversation that we had early on because we wanted to be able to identify a provider that had done this before, but also someone who could, you know, work with other Richmond-based community programs to provide wraparound services. So I know that he's met with some of our Richmond-based programs, but Darren, you can talk about your scope and, and your philosophy.
So thanks for the question. And if I, if I missed the, missed it in my answer, please feel free to, to re-ask, but we have, we believe in very low thresholds for entry into, into our, all of our programs and our, our partners from on the funder side and our, and other service providers also support the low threshold entry into the programs. We, HCEB provides homeless interventions, but we've also, you know, for the last 20 some years, we've, we've, we are special needs in support of housing developer, owner and manager. Again, we know we focus on, on helping, helping folks get stabilized and hopefully make steps into their next, the next stage in their life. We are in Contra Costa County and we also, we do have properties in the city of Richmond. So we know, we know the community. We are getting to know it even better over the last several years. And we look forward to this opportunity if we, if this goes through tonight. And please, if I missed any aspects of your question, can you please?
Yeah, do, did you work with any service provided in Richmond?
So currently we do work with Rubicon programs and we're actually in the process of of taking over three of their properties as they're divesting from housing. And so we're, we're moving in to take over their properties and own and manage them. And we also work with the county mental health through, through the Rubicon program homes, which are, two of them are MHSA properties. So we've been connected to the community that way. That's our, been the biggest, you know, our, our largest role in Richmond at this point.
Okay, thank you. So I have a couple of other questions. Thank you for answering that. In the budget, um, what is, there is no money for refuse removal? And if so, who will provide the refuse removal?
That's a great question. So when you say refuse removal, I'm assuming you're talking about sanitation services, which, you know, obviously is one of the biggest components of looking at a budget and making those numbers work. And
Trash, like and trash removal and all that.
And trash removal. So, you know, that was one of the first things that actually a staff I looked at because I wanted to know how do we make this budget work? Because even with the budget, you know, you have to figure out, you know, even with this budget with the county funding, it's still going to be very tight. And we want to make sure that we get as many services out to people as possible. The Fire Training Center actually has a Republic Services Pickup, which none of the other sites I think have that amenity. And so we would have to be responsible at these other sites for paying for those things. We did get a chance to check in with the city manager's office and look at that in advance to see if there was removal because we were concerned about some of the costs connected to that.
So is, is going to be part of the budget or not?
It's going to be part of the budget. However, you would have a cost savings if you decided to select the Fire Training Center, which would actually allow us to be able to utilize more program dollars.
Okay, thank you. So in terms of that, like the goal, like Lena mentioned that in each of these sites, they will be from 10 to 30. And so how did you come up with the, the number? So like, what is the goal? Like, if there was a goal first of like saying, based on, on the data that we collected, this is the population that we are going to serve or how that go, like, if there is any goal about how many people are going to be served by this program?
So we, we've always, I think, wanted the pilot or the first program to be manageable. So we do feel like 30 is a comfortable maximum. Now, you know, I think Councilmember Johnson raises the point that could you expand it over time? I mean, I think with additional resources, that's certainly a possibility. And while the program would support a limited number of vehicles, I mean, I think if somebody transitions into permanent housing, you know, the vehicle itself goes away and then you get a new participant. So theoretically, we could serve more people within the timeframe, but you know, I think we're a little reluctant and most of the programs we've seen are not large, like they don't have hundreds of vehicles. And so we would like to keep it a manageable size, 30 right now, but maybe if in a few months when it's operating well, could you add five more if there was space? That's a potential, but I think we want to start with a reasonable number, which is 20 to 30.
I have three more questions, just kind of like to finish. So one is around sites. So do you provide other sites besides the three that you are recommending? And I see Terminal 3 kind of like meet all the requirements or the points that you, you think. So what, what is not one of the, the sites that you are recommending?
So, so the council may recall that recently, a few months ago, the council approved a lease at Terminal 3. So while it's still owned by the port, it's no longer under full, you know, city ability to, to operate and manage. The council approved a lease, I believe in December.
So what is, is it still there? What was in our report?
Because we've been doing the site analysis for months. And that was one of the recommended sites. So things did change over time.
Okay, thank you. Um, changed in December, right? And we are in February. Okay. The other part that I want to ask is you mentioned that if we use the fire, the Fire Training Center, the helicopter will no longer be able to land there or we won't be able to use that. And I would like to see what are the implications of that when we know we don't have a full site hospital nearby if we needed to use it. So what, what are the other like option for us if we don't have that part for landing the helicopter?
So
I can speak on that, Lena, if you'd like.
Yeah, thank you.
So, you know, there's a couple of things involved with this is this, in addition to this site, one of the other sites we used to use was the Kaiser Parking Lot. And as you know, that parking lot, when COVID started, has become a testing site with tents. So we already lost one landing zone in a secure landing zone in the city. You know, we're in a hospital desert here in West County and we definitely don't have any trauma centers. So and we do have a high number of, of traumatic responses, whether it's accidents or shootings or assaults that require the patient to be taken to a trauma center. That trauma center is located at John Muir, Walnut Creek. And depending on the time of day, sometimes the patients are taken by ground to Highland. But, you know, if it's commute hours or it's high traffic time, we typically will use a helicopter to transport them across the county to get them the appropriate care. So with a temporary fence and vehicles in close proximity, we're not sure if we would actually still be able to use that as a landing zone. It might be too much, too hazardous to the residents that get put there. And so now we're left with trying to land helicopters in unsecured landing zones, which would be in the middle of the street or freeway. Some of them, it's dictated by weather such as the, the park behind Station 67 on Cutting. It's a grass field, which can be utilized in the summer sometimes, but can't be utilized in the winter because it's usually too soft for the helicopter to land in. So and then West County School District prefers to not use school fields or things like that, just because it's a, could be a hazard to any students that may be at the facility. So it kind of puts us in a predicament to try to identify potential sites, but it's going to take a little more coordination during a response to see if it's actually viable at that time that we need it. Versus the site at the Training Center is 100% under our control. It's familiar to all the pilots in the county. It's actually programmed in their flight paths, you know, in their records. So they know how to get there. So it's, it will impact, potentially would impact patient transport.
Thank you. So thank you. I finished my, my question.
Councilor McLaughlin, I'm sorry.
So thank you. Thank you, Michelle, Emily and Lena for all your work. I know this. And thank you to the Homeless Task Force. I know this is a long-term project. I mean, it actually got presented and talked about at the Homeless Task Force back when I was on the council in 2017. And here we are, 2021, and it's finally coming forward. Yay. So I'm very happy about that. I also want to say that many of us are aware of the huge number of vehicles parked along Ride and Road. And that situation is really dire. People, it's just expanded because of the pandemic, more and more people. So we're not talking about a small number of vehicles. We want to help as many people as possible because where do they go otherwise, you know? And there's already businesses along Ride and Road are putting the, you know, are, they're, they're cooperating to some extent, knowing that a solution is being worked on. But they are wanting us to have these vehicles relocated as soon as possible. And we need to accommodate as many as possible. And for that reason, the fire training center represented to me a really the best scenario because it could take up to 30 vehicles. And I just, I mean, I'm just hearing for the first time this this issue with the helicopter landing pad because I talked with a firefighter who had, I thought, bitten in touch, I think he said, with Lena. And I thought with other members of the fire department. So I don't know if the position got changed. But his view was that the fire department felt that the helicopter landing pad could would not be impacted, that it could be worked out. So it was not impacted. So, you know, if it is impacted and, you know, that presents another situation that I hadn't considered. Also, though, on the distressed community in another distressed community situation, I just want to say that I am first of all, homeless people, as I think we should all recognize, are human beings like you and me. We should not. And so are people living in subsidized housing. And we should be doing all we can. And I want to be, I've been reaching out to property managers and I want to talk to the housing authority further on that issue because I'm having some trouble reaching them. But we need to help their needs. We need to make quality of life for all our residents. That means residents in subsidized housing. That means our safe park. I envision the safe park being the most beautiful thing we can make it. And that means keeping it clean. That means keeping those services available to people and helping guide them into bettering their lives. So for me, helping the vast, the largest number of people as possible is my first priority because what happens to the rest? What happens to the 15? I mean, I don't even know if 20 to 30 spots will accommodate all the people from Riden Road. And that is a question. Does someone know Michelle or Emily or Lena or whoever might have an estimate of how many vehicles are out there on Riden Road? And there are other vehicles that might want to, you know, exist within reside within this safe park. So this isn't the only situation. But if you could answer that question.
Yeah, I can say for Riden Road, I know there's definitely more than 30 vehicles. There's more than 50 vehicles that are out there. I actually went out there the other week and took a, you know, a video of how many vehicles we had. And it can fluctuate, but there definitely are more than 30 or 50. And then we also have a large vehicle encampment over on Castro, which has a significant number of vehicles as well.
Yeah, this is a real crisis, really out of control. And then, of course, there's the non-vehicle homeless encampments, which is the next stage. And I have already been talking with Michelle and thank you and Emily on some ideas for helping people get, you know, some kind of housing that, you know, when they don't have even a vehicle to live in. So my questions right now, my second choice would be the civic center because it would be the next largest. But frankly, we have to do something. And the lighthouse, to me, is just not big enough to accommodate, to even make enough of a dent in the in in the problem that we have. But I want to just drill down a little bit more on the fire center. I also heard in the staff report or read in the staff report that there could be some relocation of some of the training, whether it's youth academy or regular fire training or and I heard battalion captain talk about or battalion chief talk about how there might be another place to locate the landing pad. But I'm also not sure if you have stated for sure because you keep saying potentially impacted, the landing pad potentially would be impacted. So my question to you is, is there a way that you think we could have them have the landing pad still be available and relocate some of the services? And we're not and right now we're in the pandemic. So the youth academy isn't operating. I don't know how much training, if any, is happening during the pandemic. But with the relocation of these these needs and potentially the landing pad not being impacted. So if you could speak to if if those are scenarios that might work for the fire department?
Do I give you speak on that, Lena?
Yes, please.
So I say potentially because physically the size of the helicopter and the ship can land there in this footprint left. The hazard isn't that. The hazard is the rotor wash that comes from the helicopter, which has very strong downbursts of wind that can knock over fences, could knock over awnings, could knock things over. You know, it's a it's a safety hazard. I mean, we have our own safety protocols. We're working around the helicopters because of the rotor wash. So without seeing, knowing exactly how this is going to be laid out, what type of personal effects the residents will have outside of their vehicles? What will be there? How will the fence be anchored down? There's a lot of variables that it could may work if done in a very in a much more permanent fashion or could pose a extreme hazard to anybody outside their vehicle if the fence blows away because of the rotor wash or if some other personal effects blow away. There's also the hazard to the actual airship and the crew itself. If debris gets sucked up into the rotor wash and comes in and damages the helicopter, it could have a really serious effect on the operation. So without knowing how the site's going to be specifically set up, it's hard to give you a definitive answer. I can only explain to you the hazards of working around and having a landing zone and helicopter come into the property. And it's why it makes it such a optimal place to have a landing zone currently because we've secured and eliminated all those hazards from that area. That's why it's in the location it is on that facility, kind of centered farthest away as it can be from everything else. The things that could be moved is the center also has conics boxes that are used for storage by code enforcement, Red Cross, CERT and fire prevention. All have we have a number of conic storage boxes that we we can relocate to the other side. Those are the items that Lena had discussed that would be relocated. You know, the training, although it during the surges had gone down, there is still mandated training that has to happen regardless. And the fact that we are in the first tier to get vaccinated was going to allow us to catch up on some of this training that we have, you know, been postponing a little bit to try to eliminate infecting each other and impacting staffing. So all those things are have continued EMS training is mandated. You know, certain other types of training are mandated and have to happen. So those things, you know, we still use the site for that. In fact, the the site would actually take away our EMS classroom, which we can relocate into one of the other buildings during the use of the site. But that's been ongoing training. It still happens. Just like the youth academy, CERT will become more of an in-person program again, like it typically was, even though they are doing things remotely right now. And that building also houses the the classroom for the CERT classes that are given to the community. So some of the stuff can be moved. Some things like the there is a U-shaped building in the middle of the grounds that the fence line is right up against the proposed fence line. That's our our fire burn room. It's where we do training burns. We would have to suspend all live fire training while this site is is being used because we're talking probably less than five foot clearance between that fence and the burn room. So we would lose the ability to do training burns that we do a few times a year. We wouldn't be able to do any of our training burns for our fire academy when we come in to hire a new class. So some things are training that happens in fixed facilities that we would just stop using in the fashion that we do currently.
Do we have definitive numbers about the number of flights that happened there? And I thought there was also possibility some a secure site at the maritime facility?
So the maritime facility is owned by Chevron, but it's on a lease to, you know, the Maritime Academy. That periodically is used for overflow parking for Chevron projects. And we are never really informed when that happens. We've actually used it as a site before trying to land a helicopter. And turns out that it was overflow parking for Chevron project. They also do hold still hold hold classes there periodically. And we're not aware of when that is and when that is not happening. So we could designate it as one, but we wouldn't know if it's actually available the day that we needed it, you know, depending what's going on at that facility. As far as flights, you know, we could go multiple flights in a week and we can go a week without. We've have we've landed, you know, more than once in a day there before, so it fluctuates a lot. I will say it is much busier in the summertime. We do tend to do a lot more flights out there in the summertime. But right now with winter and the weather, they are restricted sometimes with the weather, the inclement weather. So they can't fly in when it's raining and storming. So in the wintertime, the fight number does go down a little bit.
So a question for Lena. So hearing what was just said, is it possible to require Chevron to keep that site available for the fire department? And what is the possibility of finding other locations for the other training that was mentioned?
Yeah. And so I did get a chance to talk to the battalion chief. And and I think our goal, if the fire training facility is selected, is to minimize our impact on their ability to do trainings as much as reasonably as possible. So which is why originally we had selected a different area of the site. And I think based on the feedback, this was the area that was selected as being the least impactful. Now, in terms of requiring Chevron, I mean, I don't think we can just force a condition on them. But however, we can certainly reach out to them. And I think that's one of the things we had talked about, that if this is a selected site, we would need to identify alternative locations for a helicopter to land. And so that would take coordination with large property owners. I do think that there are options and certainly they may not all need to be at Richmond. I mean, we have adjoining neighbors with jurisdiction. There's also county property. So but it is something we're going to have to look into to and to be able to provide both the fire department and the police department and public safety with that information. But, you know, this site is no longer available. So what are some of the alternatives? And, you know, and I think, you know, to battalion chief's point that, you know, until we really know which site was selected and what the level of improvements that we can do, you know, we would like to make some of the improvements as permanent as possible. So we maintains the flexibility to use the site as needed. And then in terms of the youth academy, I think there is an existing building that they use that's on the other side of the site, but the classroom buildings. And we think that there are facilities here at the civic center that could still be used, like the multipurpose room for the CERT trainings. But they do need some equipment in those buildings that they would need to to access. So we would work with them as part of the site development to relocate some of the conics boxes that would mention so that they would still have free access to them.
And another, I I think I saw the battalion chief wanting to add something to that, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Sure, go ahead.
Councilmember McLaughlin, I think now that I hearing you referring to that site, I think there is maybe a little cross of information, like from what I was told. I know that the site, it's an MSSC site, which is on West Gertrude that you referred to. That was proposed as potentially a place that we can do our training, not so much as a landing zone. That was what was mentioned to me before also. And the problem with that site, we we've actually attempted to use them for training before any of this came up. And because it's under a lease with the Maritime Academy, if we want to use the training grounds, it has to be scheduled and paid for based on the type or size of training, if we need a classroom, things like that. So it's a there is a fee schedule associated with using that facility. And Chevron has handed over the control, all of that over to Maritime Academy.
Oh, I see. Okay. So the the final questions are, and these I'm going to get them both out at the same time. One is so, and I know you addressed this, and if you could just address it once more for my full understanding, for all our full understanding, how would the civic center site impact parking in terms of vaccinations? We have, you know, multiple crises, as we all know, not only the unsheltered and vehicle issues of the homeless, but the ongoing crisis where we all need to get vaccinated. So how how heavy of an impact would that be on that? And the second question is more to the city manager. You mentioned you were the one who brought in this impact of potentially the landing pad somewhere else. How would we know? We would have to, we we won't know that tonight at any point. Is that correct?
Yes, all of the sites, as Lena has done and her and the whole team has done a good job outlining, need additional work to make sure that it will work for this use, whether it's a curb cut, you know, or fencing or relocation of other uses or protecting, you know, the neighbors. All of them require additional work and a closer look at exactly what it's going to take to make it work for any of the three.
Okay, so I the vaccination conflict issue, and I'm sorry, one more came to mind, and this is the final one. And it's for Michelle. What then happens if we don't clear out all the vehicle? I mean, I know we talked about potentially having church parking lots be available as well, a number of small lots for some vehicles. So is that something that can happen quickly? So we don't leave people, you know, just adios, you know? And so those are my two questions and that's it.
Okay, I, sorry, go ahead. Well, Michelle, I'll start by addressing the vaccine distribution impacts. I mean, I think parking is already limited in that, you know, the the city parking lot on 27th Street is used for COVID testing as well as both drive-through and walk-up and then the farmers market on Fridays. So we do, parking is already very limited there. This would add to the demand, you know, for more parking, on-street parking. There are some time limitations in parts of the civic center. So depending on how long somebody has to wait, that could be a problem. But I think in reality, it could be a deterrent in that people may have to walk further. We'll have to maintain some level of disabled parking adjacent to the auditorium. There are city vehicles that are parked there as well. So we need to find a location for them and maybe that's behind the auditorium because there are city vehicles that use that site right now. But, you know, the library is closed. However, you know, with COVID, those things could change and it would add additional demand. So it will lead to a parking shortage over time.
I think the overtime part is important because right now with so many people working remotely and some and the facility is being closed to the public, it's it's less of an impact right now.
And the second follow-up question about looking at other parking models. For this specific model, the specific pot of funding is kind of designated. For this specific model, this specific pot of funding is kind of designated for obviously a single safe parking program with all of the resources put into there. So that you don't have kind of scattered site management where people are trying to manage multiple locations. They'll be able to provide the level of service. But I know that there have been some conversations and some recommendations from the community to consider maybe small-site parking at individual churches or businesses to be able to accommodate one or two vehicles at a time. Given that we know we have over 100 people who are sleeping in their vehicles on any given Richmond street on any night. So there may be some other opportunities to explore that discussion. But at that, at this point, that has not reached the level of city council.
Thank you. I'll hear, wait to hear from others before I make my decision.
Okay, who's next? Okay, well, I've got a few questions. I don't see anybody's hand up.
I would like to make a comment here, if I can do it.
Okay.
I think like for, for me, I am just having a, a really hard time to trying to make a, a fully informed decision around that. When I see that the three, like the three sites that you recommend, one of them, it seems like it hasn't been thought out really well. I don't know, like it had been four years since the city council approved something. And I know that it's not like you, the staff, it hasn't worked in these. But it, but it's just kind of like, they are these three sites that you presented. And now we had to have a decision today because they, we don't want to lose the money. And we know that it's important, we want, we, we know that this is so important and we want to make sure that we have some solution for our unhoused community. But it's just really difficult when it's just like, it's no well thought out report. For instance, like there is the South 7th Street, it looks good. It's, it's Caltrans, had you talked to Caltrans? It's just like, I don't know if, if, how much time you had put in there to ask this question to not only going with the, the staff on sites, but also having conversation with the other side that I own by other public entities that we can have. But tonight, we had to make the decision and I am willing to make my decision. So we can, we don't lose that, that money. But it's, it's really, it puts me in a situation of really uncomfortable when there is this kind of information and lack of order. Thank you.
Councilwoman Martinez.
Yeah. If we employed all of the sites, we would still need more sites. That's how bad the situation is. And right now, whatever we do is going to help someone. And at the same time, it's going to inconvenience someone else. But it's a trade-off that we need to make. So I understand the, the issue of having multiple sites and having to manage multiple sites. So I guess my leading criteria is which one of, which one of these sites could hold the most people?
The fire training facility.
Okay, but then, yeah, and, and to me, that's problematic because the more people we have, the less, less chance we have of having the helicopter there. I think it's important that, that the use of the helicopter remain because they've already programmed things. It's something that's been going on and it's something that we need. I mean, we've already said many times over that we're a hospital desert. And the only connection that we have is that helicopter. And any disruptions to the use of the helicopter is a disruption to our longstanding problem of having no connection to hospitals. So because of that, I would immediately say no. What's, what's the next site that has higher number?
We believe the civic center parking lot.
Okay, so.
And the lighthouse being the smallest.
Uh huh, okay, and, and then the third largest?
The lighthouse building.
That, that's, that's number three on the list. So, so it's fire training, then it's.
The civic center.
And then it's the lighthouse.
That's correct.
And, and all the others are smaller. Well, then, based on that criteria and knowing that we're still going to have a lot of homeless out on the streets and parked throughout the city, I would, I would make the lighthouse number one because it's close to transfer. Lighthouse, civic center, those are, those are the two that I would go for. But yeah, we have a major problem. We don't have the resources, but something needs to be done. And whatever we can do, we should as quickly as possible.
Okay, I got a few questions. I'm, I'm looking at the budget that's in the staff report. And I would note that the budget is $591,000. But the, the revenue we have available is 560. So we're, we're already over budget. I see site manager, $56,000. And I've heard several times people talk about a 24/7 site manager. 24/7 is 8,760 hours a year. If you take $56,000 and divide it by 8,760, that's $6.39 an hour. We have a 15, $15 minimum wage in Richmond. So I don't, I don't understand how you're going to take a, how you're going to take a 50, take $56,000 and pay a site manager 24/7. The site coordinator is budgeted for $38,000. So if you say, okay, they're going to split, they're going to split the 24/7 duty, then that would, that would cut it down to where maybe you have, say, $11 an hour. And that's still way below our minimum wage. So I, I'll take these one at a time. How do you resolve that?
Yeah, so to clarify, we will have an onsite manager. Now, the 24/7 security is further down as a $250,000.
I see, I see that, but you.
Dollar line item. But the site manager would be located onsite. But I think as Darren mentioned, that they would have a shift that, and the coordinator would also have a shift.
Well, I, I heard several times people talk about a 24/7 site manager. So this is a 20, are you budgeting for 24/7 or you're budgeting for something less than that?
So the, and, and Darren, I don't know if you're still on, that you could clarify, but I think it's a combination of, of security and onsite managers.
So the site manager line is a, is a 1.0 FTE, full-time equivalent. So 40 hours a week, 2,080 hours a year. Site coordinator is also, I believe is also in this budget, a full-time FTE, 2,080 hours a year. If, if 24/7 site staffing is what the city wants, much, some of those funds from the site security line can move over to additional site coordinators to, to provide the 24/7. But think of those two lines as, or, you know, those, those three lines, site manager, site coordinator, and site security as fungible in being able to move money around depending on what the city ultimately wants for the staffing piece.
Okay, that make, that makes sense. Refuse removal. Councilwoman Jimenez already asked about that, but I'm going to ask again. The budget for that is zero. But I, I heard, I heard people say earlier that two of the three sites would have to have refuse removal and you'd have to pay for them, right? So how come that's not in the budget?
Yeah, go ahead, Lena.
Well, I think as we noted that, you know, the, our part of our process would be to, to negotiate the budget costs with the selected site. So that's why we're not proposing this as the actual budget. Because each site will have its specific needs. And so with that council direction, we'll negotiate and the contract will reflect that. And then Michelle has some additional information on the refuse review we've been doing of the site.
Well, I, I appreciate that. I, I think one thing I'm really concerned about is whether, whether this budget is adequate or whether it's kind of a hail mary, like here's the money, you know, somebody is going to figure out what to do with it. And I think, I, I, I think when you have a, when you have a budget that starts out over budget and has $0 in it for things you know you need, like, like refuse removal, you know, I start worrying about it. I see. Huh?
Oh, no, I apologize. I, I'm sorry.
Okay, I see, I, I see $25,000 in here for towing. Now, I also heard that, that in your plan, that, that all of these vehicles would have to be operable. So why do you need $25,000 for towing?
I, I'll let Darren answer the towing question, but just to answer your question about, you know, really looking at this budget as trying to be site-specific is, it's, it's pretty obvious that this is, this is something that we're going to have to negotiate based on the site. If we get a smaller site, then some of these expenses will go down and we'll be able to negotiate a different kind of costs. We've also been into some discussions with the county and with some other partners to be able to see if they can contribute to some of our site needs. So this is not a complete full budget that you would be looking at today. But those, the costs will be negotiated based on the size of the site, how many we end up accommodating. And if we were to accommodate the largest site, these are some of the major expenses that we know that we need. So you're right, there is a gap there that we are aware of and that we are looking to negotiate. And I think Darren can answer the question about what towing has, has looked like on the sites that they have managed.
Yeah, so it's some, for towing, oftentimes that comes up when it's required to tow vehicles off the site that potentially get abandoned or that folks end up, vehicle end up not being operable after it's been on the site. We've run into that a few times with our other, other programs. That number, 25,000, is a conservative budgeting number, meaning it's pretty high. But it's also an expense that we don't want to have to worry about later in having vehicles on the site that we, that we cannot move. I believe we can also, we could probably move that, that budget item down if the program is going to require that all vehicles be operable.
Okay, and I, I noted that all of the sites require fencing, but I don't see a, I don't see a line item in the budget for fencing.
Yes, and we've been in communication with Controfrost Health Services that they may have some additional funding for one-time capital improvements. So we're, you know, if, if a site is selected, we'll be jumping on that quickly to try to get some of the funds that they have available for those one-time uses.
In one place in the staff report where, where it has a brief summary of pros and cons of each site, it said that the fire department might have to incur additional costs to do training elsewhere. If, if you go to the fire training center site, how, how much, what are those costs? What's the magnitude of them?
Battalion chief, could you address that?
Some, some of these training exercises that we have to move, we haven't ever had to pay anybody to use their site. Something like a use of a potentially MOTCO and Concord from Confire to use it to do live-fire training. Those all are costs we've never had to pay out of pocket before. So some of those I, I don't know. The other potential impact would be things like sites to do confined space training, which is mandated annually to maintain our certification. We would probably be able to do that at MSSC. You know, that, that usually will run a couple hundred dollars a day in usage fees. But that's another thing, because we don't have to. We don't know what their most current fee schedule is for some of the, those uses that we would need.
Well, can you give me just a real ballpark number of what we're looking at? Because if we're comparing these three sites and the, and the fire training center is going to incur additional cost to move training elsewhere, then we have to, we have to add that to the budget. So are we talking about, are we talking about a couple hundred dollars? Or are we talking about tens of thousands of dollars over a year?
I think over the course of a year, you could probably push maybe to 10,000. It depends. Like I said, some of those I have, I don't have any idea yet how much it would cost to, to request the use of someone else's facility to do something as a training burn. That's a high expense item. That may cost a couple thousand dollars for just standard training. Like I said, that'd be a couple hundred dollars per time that we have to do it. So, you know, it, it could be a few thousand dollars, up to maybe $10,000 per calendar year.
So you think $10,000 annually is a reasonable estimate?
I think so, because I think when you start including the live-fire training, because that's a, you know, it has to be a certified site.
Yeah, I just need a number to work with. So another, another issue that's come up is who gets priority? We, we've already heard that we have, we have over 50 vehicles at Ryden Road. And we have another, I don't know how many, 30, 40, 50 maybe, at the end of Castro Street. So we're talking about maybe 100 vehicles, plus, plus there are a number of them in various neighborhoods. So probably well over 100 vehicles in Richmond that people are living in. And we're talking about creating a space for 15 to 30. So how do you decide who gets to come to this new safe park? And who has to stay at Ryden Road or somewhere else?
That's a good point, Mr. Mayor. And I think that a part of that is, number one, kind of drilling down on, you know, on who we can accept into the program. And so it would actually be single adults, two per, you know, say, unit, let's just say that, whether it's a, you know, RV or a vehicle. And then our scope of, of work we were looking at is Richmond and West County, since we are getting West County dollars from Heap. But the homeless population is, is transitory. So I mean, you know, they can, you know, most of them have resided in Richmond and can, you know, show us through the screening process that they've had a previous designation spot where they stayed that's been in Richmond. The way that Housing Consortium of East Bay has done this before with the city of Oakland is that they've actually identified folks who are program participants who are kind of central and germane to the city. And, and we would want to do something very similar. So I don't know if, Darren, you would like to speak to that. But that would be something that would be required as part of the program participation agreement is that you have some kind of affiliation with the Richmond area and there's ways that they can do that.
Yeah, and one of the ways we can also work with that is, is working with some of the other Richmond providers like SOS to help identify the certain areas where the, you want intervention to happen. And we could do invites into the site from those specific areas. That's how it was done in, in Oakland for the two RV safe parking sites that we operate, as well as some of the other, the other organizations operate, where it was an actual invitation into the site to clear certain areas.
Well, clearly, you know, even if you go to the largest site, which, which you say will handle 30 vehicles, that means, that means there's 60 or 70 that aren't going to be able to go there. And I, I just think it might be challenging to try to figure out who gets to go and who doesn't. And then another thing, I, I did a little math exercise. And I said, okay, if, if we have a budget of $560,000, if we can, if we can put 30, if we can handle 30 vehicles, that's, that's about $19,000 a vehicle for the year. If we can handle 20, that's about $30,000 a year, $28,000. And if we can only handle 15, that's almost $38,000. The cost, the average cost of a one-bedroom apartment in Richmond or one-bedroom house is, is $1,795. So you could, for the, for the cost, for the total cost of running this operation, you could, you could, you could rent everybody an apartment, be done with it. So anybody think of that?
Yes, that actually is something that we did think of when we initially had conversations with Contra Costa County. We talked about the cost estimate. But right now, the county is having difficulty being able to place people. I know that they recently have put out a request for qualification to try to find housing providers' space to be able to locate people and transition people after the hotel program project room closes. People can transition into more permanent housing. And then I think part of the piece of that cost is also the wraparound services. Because even if housing a space or housing stock is available, not everyone is available to go in that. One of the issues with our vehicle-dwelling community is they know if they try to, if say that there was space available in some of our hotels, they lose access to their vehicle and that's really the only thing that they own. And so there was concern that many participants, even if there is space available, don't necessarily participate in those programs for that particular reason. But it is something that we had considered. And obviously, more transition and permanent housing is needed. But this was the model that we were directed to look at.
So in looking at those three sites, well, in looking at all the sites, I'm not sure I would agree that, that these are the best. I mean, we've got, we've got huge sites that didn't make the cut, like, like the parking lots at Hilltop, you know? Nobody's using, Hilltop's closed and it's not going to open, it's not going to open within the year. So there's an opportunity to put almost an unlimited number of vehicles at Hilltop. And then there's some other sites that the city council already approved. The Castro Street in North Richmond, which would, I think, take more vehicles than either the Civic. It would take at least as many vehicles as the Civic Center site. And, and it would, there'd be very few problems associated with it. So I guess, I don't understand your scoring system and I don't, I don't agree that these are the three best sites. But having said that, you know, if we're going to choose one, I'd probably go for the Fire Training Center. I think that, you know, there's been a lot of discussion about all the problems it's going to cause for certain, the Richmond Youth Academy and the helicopter and the Fire Department and all that kind of thing. But, but, you know, I, I don't see any of these are critical. You know, helicopters land all over the place all the time. That's why they use helicopters. In the last year, we've had two helicopters land just down the hill from me on the, on the Baseball Diamond near Washington School. So all you need is a Baseball Diamond, a park, a parking lot, you know, Hilltop, the port. There are, there are suitable helicopter landing places all over Richmond and they get used all the time. So I'm not convinced that the helicopters are, you know, a critical, critical item. And I think these other programs at the Fire Training Center, you know, they can, for a year, they can either go somewhere else or they can, can be accommodated there. And I think since, since you can get more vehicles into the Fire Training Center, far more than either of these two other sites, you're getting more bang for your buck by a long shot. And that's important. I think if we're going to serve, if we're going to serve people, we need to serve as many as we can at the lowest cost per unit. So I think that, and I've heard that, you know, the cost of relocating some of these training, trainings at the Fire Training Center, $10,000 a year. I mean, that's, in terms of this whole budget, that's a drop in the bucket. So anyway, anybody else have questions or comments? I don't see any.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that I agree with you.
Order public comment.
Oh, public comment. Yeah, I'll wait for after the public comment. I was going to make a motion.
Well, I, you know, if you want to say what's your favorite place.
I was just going to make a motion, I don't, you know, for the fire station with the, with the understanding that we would find solutions for all the relocation, including the helicopter finding another spot. I agree that these could be located, relocated and would need to be. So that would be my motion. But I want to hear public comment first.
I'm sure we have public speakers. You want to call them, Madam Clerk?
We have nine speakers and I'll turn it over to Ursula.
The nine speakers are Nick Dispota, Richmond Firefighters 188, Angela Cox, Tom Kelly, phone number ending in 9146, Lisa Johnson, Tarnell Abbott, Beverly Galloway and Naomi Williams. Our first speaker is Nick Dispota.
Hello, council members. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can. And you have up to two minutes.
We now all understand that the Safe Parking Program does a lot more than providing space for people now forced to live in their vehicles. But I don't believe most Richmond residents understand this. So to encourage broad acceptance of this and future programs for sheltering homeless people, I encourage the city to plan on dedicating resources to communicating these three points. One, the program enables the provision of services that will help people find permanent housing and employment. Two, it will provide security for people now living in vehicles or tents, spread, potentially tents, spread out around the city and therefore reduce crime nuisance complaints and enforcement actions. And it will reduce the spread of COVID throughout the community by providing sanitation and personal protective equipment. There's a circular relationship between COVID and homelessness. COVID has led to fewer jobs, less earnings, less stable living conditions, more homelessness, more potential for the spread of COVID. Although the distribution of effective vaccines is encouraging, it doesn't mean the homeless crisis will decline to pre-COVID levels anytime soon. A study by the Economic Roundtable found that COVID-driven loss of jobs and employment income will cause the number of homeless workers to increase each year through 2023. So Mayor Butt's point about housing homeless people as an alternative to safe, organized spaces will soon hit a wall. So I'll conclude with these two points. Public education must be part of the response to the homeless crisis in order to reduce the NIMBY response, which can impede good solutions. And as we, as the connection between economic conditions, a highly contagious disease and homelessness is better understood and more broadly communicated, people will realize, like all environmental challenges, that it's not an us-or-them condition, but that we're all in this together.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richmond Firefighters. And can you please state your complete name for the record?
Good evening, Luis Pedia, President, Richmond Firefighters Local 188. Nobody is more aware of the homeless problem near firefighters. Daily, we respond to numerous encampment fires and medicals. And I mean daily, multiple times daily. However, we do want to do our part. We want to try to help the city and try to find a solution to this problem, which is very, very, it's a tricky problem. Our only request is that the use of the Training Center is temporary. Firefighters need to have a place to practice, you know, their disciplines and hone their skills. And the current placement of the RVs would prevent us from using the training burn rooms. So when we do decide to hire more firefighters, the training, the burn trailers will be critical in their development. That's all we're asking. Please don't make this permanent. Lastly, helicopter zones are not readily available. Okay, losing the landing zone there at the tower will be an issue. We use it a lot. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Angela Cox. Angela?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead, Angela.
Okay. My name is Angela Cox. I'm a Richmond resident and I'm also an employee of the Richmond Public Library. I think that what the council is interested in doing is very important, that there are some people because of the COVID, because employment trends have changed, find themselves in this position. But I'm hearing some key things too. Number one, the security and services would be for the people within this community. And it's voluntary and that there are guidelines and rules. What I'm also concerned about, which makes me opposed to having it in the Civic Center Plaza, is, are the issues and the challenges that the library staff and the public have accessing the library. Recently, there was a food giveaway. And then there's restrictions that were done with the COVID testing. And so there was no way for people to come to the library and pick up their materials. People can't come into the library, but they still get usage of the library. The other thing is we have homeless encampments in the area, the courtyard where the children's area is. We have homeless people there that are aggressive, that are, that have sort of attacked some of the staff that are there. They defecate, they urinate, and when we call the police, they come out and say, well, laudering, laudering is not a crime. But these are issues that we, as people who work for the city and serve the citizens, have to contend with on a daily basis. And, and if we can't get support and feel safe going into our buildings and serving our citizens, what does that say about us? And that's all I have to say. I'm opposed to having it in the Civic Center Plaza.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Kelly.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Tom Kelly. I'm a resident of Berkeley. But my wife Jane and I have been volunteering down on the Bay Trail parallel to Riden Road for the last 17 years. We've been working on a restoration project there that has hosted thousands of volunteers. Many come from actually Richmond schools and Richmond area. We, over time, we've got to know many of the campers that are living there. And while I understand some of the concerns that are expressed by people about what moving a camping community into their neighborhood might mean, we found that for the most part, the folks that are living on Riden Road try to keep to themselves, they try to keep a low profile. Doesn't necessarily mean that it does, it always works. But we also see people coming in from outside that community who, from our perspective, are the ones that if there are issues are created by them. I would like to second Councilmember McLaughlin's comments about who these folks are and our responsibility to try and assist them. Actually, think about the COVID vaccine and the fact that none of us could come up with something like that, I'm sure. And yet, we rely on our government to provide that kind of help to us in a situation where things are pretty dire. Just a couple of comments, there are, I think, 45 vehicles on Riden Road right now. Some of the people there have multiple vehicles. So, you know, it would be worth going down and assessing just how many folks are there. We're very supportive of Richmond's effort and want to thank Michelle and SOS Richmond and all the folks that have been trying to help. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is phone number ending in 9146. And please state your complete name for the record. Phone number ending in 9146.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Stacy Walker. I'm a Richmond resident and employee of the city, working at the Richmond Public Library. As Angela Cox previously stated, library staff and patrons have been dealing with the ongoing problem of homelessness in and around the library and the Civic Center complex for many years now. We've brought this to the attention of council on multiple occasions. Management is well aware of it. PD has been contacted multiple times, even coming in to help us find solutions to the problems. And yet, no action has been taken. And due to COVID, the homelessness is actually worse now in that courtyard. I invite any one of you to come to the courtyard on any given morning and see the people who are living in that courtyard, ranging in numbers from six to nine at a time. It's problematic. Some of them are mentally ill. They're using illegal substances. They're drinking alcohol. They're urinating and defecating in the open in public spaces. They're, we're routinely calling security to clear the space, calling PD to clear the space. And yet, still nothing is done. It's upsetting to me that we would spend more than a half a million dollars to help such a small number of people who I don't disagree, they need the help. But when we are struggling to provide services to Richmond residents and citizens from all over the county who don't feel safe walking through our courtyard, who don't feel safe entering our building due to the problems that we have, I have a problem with the expenditure. I don't disagree with the program. I wholly disagree with it being done at the Civic Center parking lot. We don't need any more problems in the Civic Center complex. And I can already see that we're going to run over budget. And that is going to force us to make cuts to other public services that are already, money is being siphoned away from them. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Lisa Johnson.
Can you hear me?
Yes, you can start.
Good evening, council and staff. I'd first like to acknowledge city staff, especially Michelle, Emily and Lena, for all of the time and energy they invested in developing this proposal, as well as one means to compassionately address our current homeless crisis. Some of you may be aware that Mike Bosilis and myself actively participated in identifying possible sites for this program and reviewing with staff. City staff was originally proposing a lot on Canal Boulevard. And I and Minnie and Brickyard Cove want to thank staff for hearing our valid concerns and no longer recommending the site. Per my email to you earlier today, I summarized those concerns, as well as the liability exposure to the city regarding the unique and significant public health and safety issues to the program participants, residents and businesses. Regarding the three sites that city staff is recommending, I support these sites, but I do believe there are some alternative sites that qualify. Importantly, we are deserving, we are, we all deserve a short and long-term plan that will address this crisis in a timely and effective manner. The public needs and deserves city transparency from the beginning about how long this program will truly last and assurances to that effect. Supervisor Joya has confirmed that there is not a single safe parking program in the Bay Area that has ended. The city has told the public before that grant-funded programs would be temporary, but then continued them utilizing precious general fund dollars. We are broke. Therefore, the city needs to be held accountable and clarify tonight how they will ensure its completion or fund this program after one year. If they use general fund dollars, they should state now where that money will come from and which existing programs will be negatively impacted. There must be a plan after one year before this is fully approved. And I would love for that plan to consider motel to SRO conversions with the necessary assurances to ensure public health and safety. It is for this very reason that this program should be located near City Hall so that our elected leaders and city management are frequently reminded of the responsibility to develop an effective long-term plan in collaboration with our county and state elected leaders to help provide these individuals with more stable housing options in a timely and effective manner. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tarnell Abbott.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, Tarnell Abbott. I'm a very, very, very extremely fortunate to be able to be a Richmond homeowner. Although I know that I've been very close to being a homeless individual myself in the past when I was a young person with hardly any money. Hey, Mayor Butt, I actually agree with you on some of what you said. Especially, I love the idea of how about Hilltop being a place to house people. Not only could it house people in vehicles, who were sleeping in their vehicles, but you know, how about building low-income housing at Hilltop, instead of on a toxic waste dump at Seneca? I do think of the three locations prioritized by staff, the fire training site is the best option because of its capacity, and also because of problems using the Civic Center parking, including, well, eventually, the library also will open one day, and patrons need parking. But sooner than that, assuming that the auditorium becomes a COVID vaccination site, you're going to need all the parking you can get around there. And it's already impacted by the testing site. So if you're going to put, if you're going to make that parking lot inaccessible, how are people supposed to go get their COVID vaccinations? I had to go to Hercules to get one. And believe me, it was quite a large area that I was funneled and channeled and whatever into, and they're, they're doing about six hundred a day. And you're going to have to have a big parking lot to accommodate COVID vaccinations. Now, there's never enough shelter space, you got to start building tiny homes. There's lots of other sites where a helicopter can land.
Your time is expired. Thank you. Our next speaker is Beverly Galloway.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are.
All right. Thank you for having this topic raised at the council meeting. I feel like, from my standpoint, it's been very difficult to get full information about the program, what the plans are, what the budget is, how things have come to this point. And we were all surprised when the Canal Street location was chosen. And so we were, you know, we were, it was not a good surprise because we hadn't been included. And I think before the council gets the buy-in from the public is that they have to understand that the public needs to understand what this is all about. I'm wondering, for example, what are the criteria that, for allowing a vehicle in one of the locations? So, are they interviewed? And are people with drugs weeded out, and mental health weeded out, and only people who are poor and unfortunate in their housing allowed? What is the end game? As somebody else pointed out, what happens after the first year? And what, you know, what's the plan for that? And also, the, I'm disturbed by the budgeting. It seems like it hasn't been very well thought out, and not even tied to the actual plans. So, that and, you know, I'm very worried about the other impacts. There are trade-offs between being a taxpayer and receiving some benefit from that, and then having to confront a very difficult situation. But I think the taxpayers need to be considered as well.
Thank you. And our last speaker is Naomi Williams.
Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead Naomi.
Okay. I agree with Willis and Johnson, the impact on our communities, again. You always look down here on the South Side for things that you don't want to deal with. The Civic Center is the best spot to put the safe parking, because it's not next to the neighborhoods. We have a Friendship Manor, which have seniors right there at the fire station. They live there, they've got their homes there. And across the street, they got homes over there as well. I don't know what, I know Ridin Road or Ridin Road got cars on it, that might be fine. But I have cars and Pullman that's on every block, and RVs that's on every block already. We're already impacted with the homeless. We can't blame them for being homeless, but we can blame you for putting them in our neighborhoods for us. When, like somebody else said, there's a lot more places that the homeless can go. You don't always have them, you're not going to put them all over here. So I don't know what you're thinking about by saying, put it at the fire station, when that's on cutting and stige. And that's where they said they were going to sell the land in the first place to build some homes. So, I don't know, you guys got to think about this. Think about us, we live over here, we pay taxes. So what's for us? We just have to deal with, because you say so, you don't want it in your neighborhood, because there's a place over there off of Fifty-Fifth, around the corner, as you go toward, where you go to Costco, and it's empty. There's a place for at least fifteen cars of RVs. So think about it. But I agree with Willis and Johnson. Thank you.
Thank you. And that was our last public speaker.
Councilor McLaughlin, you got a motion?
First, first question, if I can, and this is about something you mentioned, Mayor Butt. What is, would it be possible to consider locating it at the hillside parking lot? Hilltop, I'm sorry. I know, or, I mean, is that something that we could put forward tonight? I know you haven't analyzed it yet, but it's for planning or Michelle? If somebody has any ideas as whether we could say, no, we want the Hilltop parking lot to be the site. And yes, you would have to do some quick follow-up on that. But have you discussed that at all, or have you considered that at all?
So we did evaluate the Hilltop parking lot for a potential location. The challenge is, is it's privately owned. So we would need to get the property owner to agree, and we do know that the property is currently on the market for sale. So, right now, we don't, plus, there could be a charge that adds costs to the demand. But, so, right now, I don't know if they would be willing to provide the city a lease, even at no cost.
And if the council wanted to consider that, what I would recommend, so that we don't lose the funding, is that you would include a second choice or a backup so that we could keep moving forward. If we can't, if we can't quickly enough, if that's the council's choice, if we can't quickly enough move forward with it.
Okay. So, my, you know, I just want to address the concerns of some of the speakers, and then I'll make a motion. And I know Councilmember Willis has some, has a comment too, that I'm interested in hearing. But I do want to get a motion out there to see if we could move forward. So, I realize that there, you know, Friendship Manor is nearby, but there is a whole nother parking lot in between, you know, and a fence around the parking lot for Friendship Manor. And then there's the big iron fence around the fire station, and I don't know exactly where the cars would be located, but it would, it's really a protected place that will not, you know, be in any way, like, right up against a home. And from what I could see, there aren't any homes across the street, or any, you know, any place on cutting or stige that is an adjacent residential area. So, again, I think we want to raise up our whole community, including our unsheltered community, but also community members in subsidized housing. And we need to do all this, we need to do it all at once, and not say, oh, we're just sloughing this off on somebody. No, we're lifting up a community, and we want to lift up all elements of our community. So I would say, first, first, the motion would be to check out Hilltop. If that is not available, or can't be ramped up fast enough, then the second choice would be the fire, the fire training center, because it would accommodate the most, help the most people. So that's the motion for, you know, to see if we could get the votes on that.
Do you have a second?
Can I add something? Why don't we also see South Seventh Street, which is owned by Caltrans? Kind of like, like, two options to see if they don't work, we can do what Gail is saying. I think everybody says that they want to help homelessness and, or house population, but nobody wants to help in their backyard. And that is frustrating, and we need to do something. And my frustration is now that, like, my thing here is now, like, we need to do it. But I feel like there is a lack of more thorough this presentation and research about what are the good sites. So now here, we have the Hilltop, and there's on others. So I just want, like, I don't want to delay this process because is, we will lose the, we may lose the funds. But I think I just encourage the staff to do a better analysis. This is important, and we need to make sure that we provide a space that is adequate, and we can do it. So, if it's okay with Councilwoman McLaughlin, I will ask South Seventh Street and look if we can ask Caltrans to also allow...
Can you explain where that site is?
It's near the Bayview exit. But I guess, Councilmember Jimenez, we have reached out to Caltrans, and particularly, we were looking at the Park and Ride near Hilltop, which, you know, but they are not leasing any more property for homelessness services. And I don't know if that's due to COVID, because obviously, they've done a lot of property leases in Oakland. But they've told us that that's not a possibility.
And if I could briefly add, of the thirty-five sites that were looked at, there was a site analysis done on each of these thirty-five sites. And some of them, in the limited period of time that we had, I do want to commend my team members. We did try to reach out to as many community members, and especially on the private sites, to see if some of the private property owners would be willing to work with us, and in some cases, they were not. So if you do have other questions, I know we have the ability to bring up those site maps. But I do want to stress that there were thirty-five sites that were evaluated.
Councilor Willis, you're next. You want to second this motion, so we can get something going?
You know what, I wish I could second this motion, but I just wanted to comment on the motion, you know, respectfully. No, yeah, I mean, no, if this was strictly about, you know, the size of the site, you know, the fire station would be no problem for me. As a matter of fact, in background conversations with staff, like, one of the things that did come up to me was the fire station, or the general warehouse off, in the, next to the bay, because of its size and scope. But I guess the, one of the main reasons, honestly, and if this seems petty to some people, I'm sorry, but this is just from door knocking for nine and a half years, and talking to residents in those neighborhood. I mean, there is a feeling, and there is a hurt and pain, that every time the city or government has a problem, they always want to dump it in poorer communities. I agree one hundred percent, we need to be lifting up everybody and treating people the same with dignity. You know, but that's now where my position is coming from. My position has come from true pain, true history, and just not wanting to perpetuate the cycle of putting major issues and problems in primarily people of color, underserved communities, because there's a real pain that stretches back decades, even before I was born around that. And I don't want to perpetuate the cycle. Plus, I know this is going to be a year pilot program. And the other things that makes the other sites attractive to me, for me, honestly, number one is the Civic Center, is because of its, it has more of a capacity, its proximity to AC transit, Richmond grip, and even accessible to get down to the Bay Area, your rescue mission, and the Bart Station as well. And I feel like it's more likely going to be paid attention to, because so many folks who are involved in the service industry are going to see what's going on, and it could even be monitored better, that's why that's my number one pick. So if the motion does go forward, just kind of, oh, and also, I do agree with the Hilltop thing. I one hundred percent agree with that. I just think I might have to abstain just for right now on selecting the fire station, because I just see so many of those residents and those conversations I have, and they're deep, they're profound, and I don't want to put that on them. So that's just where I'm coming from, but if it was about size alone, I would agree with you one hundred percent. So I'm just going to take a step back right now.
Oh, I still need a second. Anybody willing to second this motion? Councilor Johnson, you?
And now, so I was kind of, you know, hesitant to raise my hand, because I know you're looking for a second, but I just, I had a comment, actually, that I wanted to make.
Go ahead.
Yeah, just building on what Councilmember Willis has said. You know, if this motion does go forward, I too would be taking a step back. Now, my understanding, you know, that this will accommodate the most amount of cars, and, you know, even, you know, this will have the most impact, and, you know, all of that good stuff, and we'll even be able to relocate the programs and pay for other places to put them. And I do hear you, Councilwoman McLaughlin, when you say, you know, we have to take care of every neighborhood, and we have to, you know, it's not that we're going to forget the neighborhood that this community has gone into. I completely hear you when you say that. However, me personally, I just, I can't vote yes until we do that. You get what I'm saying? And so, until we increase the opportunities, until we make it a place where people aren't fighting for food, because that, South Richmond is a food desert. South Richmond is mostly, it's a hospital, most like most of Richmond, but in close proximity to these amenities is exacerbated in this community. And I know we talk a lot about Friendship Manor, but then right across from Friendship Manor is Monterey Pines, Kennedy Manor, where I grew up as well. So it's, it's just, it's just a lot of people with, who don't have a lot. And I just feel like to add another group of people who don't have a lot into that pressure cooker situation can cause a lot to boil over, especially when we're taking out the helicopter services that may help provide some type of relief when things do boil over. It's just, it just sounds, I'm just saying all of that to say, I understand where you're coming from, Councilwoman, and if this moves forward, I'm not going to be in the streets speaking out against it. You'll even find me at the Fire Training Center, you know, volunteering and doing what I can. But it's for the reasons that I previously stated, as well as Councilmember Willis has stated, that I won't be able to support this particular motion.
Well, I think we need to find, we either need to fish or cut bait here. So to bring it to a vote, I'll second it. And let's, let's call for a vote on it, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Bates? Absent. Councilmember Jimenez?
Can you repeat where we are voting on, please?
We're voting to approve. The first choice would be Hilltop, checking on Hilltop. Second choice would be the fire station. Fire training station. Your vote, Councilmember Jimenez?
I, I will vote yes, but with saying that, like, we, I wish we had the Hilltop and working on that. But I know that we need to resolve these, and the site is, is the site that gets more people. So I vote yes, but wishing that the Hilltop is the one that we can use.
Councilwoman Johnson?
And, you know, I've kind of already stated, but, you know, I guess I'll just say this. This just kind of shows that this isn't an easy, you know, topic for us to address. And, you know, no matter what we do, the fact that we're even willing to, you know, move forward with something, I think is, you know, is a step ahead of most municipalities. But I'm going to have to abstain from this, from this motion.
Councilmember Martinez?
Well, it's a difficult, difficult issue.
Well, um, we need to do something. We need to do something quickly. I, um, I like the idea of considering Hilltop. I don't like the idea of the fire training center. I'm gonna abstain.
Councilwoman McLaughlin?
Um, I'm voting yes, and I, I just wanna say that all of these, all of these three recommended have problems, including the very small one, um, in terms of residential adjacency. Um, so it's really a tough decision. And I, I think this one, because it's bare, it's got this huge iron fence and it has space. Um, be, and Monterey Pines is a ways, um, is across, um, the street and there, it's fenced, et cetera. I'm not quite as concerned, uh, but, uh, it is a tough decision and I hear everybody's point of view. Um, and Hilltop would be the, the better, uh, choice if it's a possibility. So my, my choice is, or my vote is yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yeah, um, yeah, you know, I, I unfortunately have to abstain for the reasons I stated, but, uh, yeah, I abstain.
And Mayor Butt?
Yes.
Motion fails. The council members, Jimenez, McLaughlin, and Mayor Butt voting yes. Councilmembers Johnson, Martinez, and Willis abstaining, and Vice Mayor Bates absent.
Okay. Anybody wanna throw another motion?
Yeah, I'll, uh, if I may, and look, I'm hurt everybody in a public comments concern. I get it, but I am going to, uh, modify the previous motion and say Hilltop first with the civic center being my second choice unless somebody wants to make a friendly amendment for the second site. I'm honestly open to it, uh, due to the fact, because I actually do recognize that there is a homeless population that's out in that area. And honestly, there is a little excitement in me thinking about having an area that actually helps out with homeless services and being able to reach out to that immediate population hanging there on the day-to-day. So Hilltop to see if they'll be willing to accept doing, taking on this site. Uh, but if not, my motion would be for the civic center as the second choice.
Okay, so second, so second that motion.
I would second that motion with, with the, um, and I also wanted to comment that, you know, I most definitely heard, um, the library workers and, you know, I, you know, Ms. Cox, I'll be more than happy to reach out to you to see how we could improve security down at the library as well. So, you know, but I, 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 I would like to second this motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's call a vote.
A, a friendly amendment in that, um, in that we do, um, make sure that staff is aware of the homeless encampment and the concerns of library workers to even get to work in a safe way and that they address that, um, ASAP and in terms of, yeah, whatever needs to be done, you know, in a humane way.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Okay, let's. It's accepted.
And speaking for myself, I'd be happy to be a part of those conversations too, just to see how I can help in my capacity.
Let's throw a vote, Madam Clerk.
Vice Mayor Bates is absent. Councilmember Jimenez?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember McLaughlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Willis?
Yes.
And Mayor Butt?
No.
The motion passes with Vice Mayor Bates absent and Mayor Butt is, uh, voting no.
Okay, we're done with that. Let's move to the, uh, la, uh, item K, right?
Item K is reports of officers refer us to staff and general reports, including AB one, two, three, four reports.
Okay. Anybody have reports?
I have an announcement, not, not.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so this is the first meeting in February, the second day of Black History Month. And I just wanted to take this time to not only wish everybody a bla, a Happy Black History Month, but also, you know, share a little bit of history. It was started in nineteen twenty-six, um, by Carter G. Woodson and his, um, organization, the Association for the Study of Negro Life and History to celebrate, um, President Lincoln's birthday on February twelfth and Frederick Douglass's birthday on February fourteenth, which is why it started off as Negro History Week and over time it grew into Black History Month. And we, they didn't give us anything. We took it. Um, and this year's theme with the Association for the Study of African-American Life and History, um, the theme is the Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity. Um, and the city's flag raising ceremony of the Pan-African flag, um, which was created by the Honorable Marcus Garvey in nineteen twenties, nineteen twenty, um, will take place this month. And I will be sure to get that information out to everyone as soon as it's, um, submitted in detail. So once again, Happy Black History Month, everyone.
Yeah, we would've ended with that rather than my report, dude. Come on.
We gotta coordinate next time.
Any other report, any other reports?
Yeah, um, for those who are unaware, uh, even despite the digital divide, I want to point out that I've gotten concerns of people having a hard time who actually qualify getting access to, uh, COVID vaccinations, even if they do fall in the phase one, uh, distribution process. So I did wanna let people know to visit coronavirus.cchealth.org forward slash get vaccinated. That's coronavirus.cchealth.org forward slash get vaccinated. Uh, this is a county site where you can go to see if you are eligible to be vaccinated and actually set up an appointment. And I would hope that my other colleagues could help me out by reaching out to our, uh, board of supervisors as well. I've already made contact, but if you know constituencies that are suffering from the digital divide or seniors that are having a hard time figuring out where to get vaccinated or their doctor may be unaware themselves, trying to figure out a way on how we can make it more accessible for folks in the at-risk category to get vaccinated without causing too much trouble. But, uh, until then, if you are friend or know somebody or have access to the internet and still haven't gotten vaccinated or want more information to get vaccinated and how the distribution is working out, please go to coronavirus.cchealth.org forward slash get vaccinated. Thank you again. I hope everybody has a good evening.
You're muted, Mayor.
I hate these mute things. It just does it itself, you know? Uh, any other reports?
Yeah, I, uh, I have a report. Um, Wednesday, January twenty-seventh, I attended the, uh, East Bay Plain Substation, Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Plan Development, uh, PAC meeting. Um, as, as you should know, uh, uh, in September twenty-fourteen, uh, the state passed a, uh, Groundwater Sustainability Act, uh, requiring all, all, uh, local jurisdictions to, uh, create a sus, sustainability plan. East Bay Mud is the, uh, agency that, uh, is in charge of the, um, East Bay Plain Sub, Sub Basin, which stretches from the San Pablo Creek, uh, Cone, all the way down to Hayward. And, uh, and so, uh, they're in charge of making sure that, uh, there is a plan to sustain uh, and, and, uh, ensure that groundwater is, uh, 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 adequate. Um, and, um, they will be having a, uh, stakeholders meeting in February. I can send out the information for that later.
You're muted, Mayor.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting tonight in, um, memory of Sabrina Carita. Sabrina was a longtime Richmond resident. She passed away on Friday. Uh, she was the office manager at Interactive Resources for twenty-five years. And before she joined Interactive Resources, she worked for a, another architecture firm, Cometa and Confici. And, uh, uh, it was really a blow to us. Uh, it was a real loss for the Interactive Resources family, uh, to loo, to lose her. So I wanna adjourn tonight's meeting in her memory.
And Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, I'd also like to add to that, um, to a memorial. Um, I would like to add to that, although she wasn't a Richmond resident, I'm pretty sure everybody in Richmond mourned when, you know, the great Cicely Tyson passed, and I would like to add her name to the list of adjournments. Um, and if you aren't familiar, she was an American actress, fashion model, and for a short period of time was the wife of jazz legend Miles Davis. So, um, just wanted to also add her name to that list of adjournments too.
Okay, anything else? Go on once, go on twice. Thank you. We are adjourned.
Bye.
Bye-bye, everyone.
All right.